I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Administrator, would you please call Roy? Mayor Pilon.
Here.
Councilmember Alders.
Here.
Councilmember Blake.
Here.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Here.
And Councilmember Rainville.
Present.
Planner Stockman.
Present.
All right. Thank you. All right, tonight's agenda, this is a work session for the city council. It is Thursday, October 20th, 2022, it's 5:30 PM. And we have a number of things on the agenda. I would like to add an item to the agenda, and I'd like to add this as a number, number one or so, A. We've come to our attention that we have three checks that need to get out in a timely fashion. That our next meeting isn't, the council isn't until November, and these have due dates before that. And so I would like to add that to the agenda as item A. And then I think from a continuity standpoint, I would like to switch what's currently item, we'll keep item B, but take our current item A, code enforcement updates and process, and make that C. And CUPs, IUPs would become D. So it'd be checks A, assessment list B, code enforcement, C, and CUPs, IUPs, D. Anything else on the agenda? Seeing none, I'd take a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I move the, uh, council approve the agenda as amended.
Motion, we have second.
Seconded.
A motion by Councilmember Rainville, second by Councilmember Blake. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right, item A. We have three checks that need to, to get out before our next council meeting. One is the fourth quarter law enforcement contract payment, eighty-one thousand, twenty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. Uh, we have a, um, North Country construction remodeling for the finishing of the Park Pavilion concession building for fifty-one hundred and fifty dollars. And we have Rico lease rental that is five hundred ninety-six dollars and seventy-five cents. So do we have a motion to approve those for payment?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I would move to, uh, council approve the payment of those three individual invoices.
All right.
Second.
Have motion, Councilmember Rainville, second, Councilmember Greenberg, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right, item B. Would be the assessment list. You have a request for council action in front of you. And these are items that the staff has been working on for a period of time. And, uh, have not gotten satisfactory closure on, I'm assuming.
Correct.
And, uh, and they have come up with some charges. And according to the request for council action, we'll have a public hearing on this on November 10th at this location at 7:00 PM. That is a time not to determine if a violation has occurred, that's what staff has already presented the information for. The ability to appeal a citation is provided as administrative process. Uh, so property owners were notified with citation. And any cost incurred can appeal the fines and charges. If now due has lapsed and each property is included in the assessment roll. So we have a hearing on the twenty, on the 10th, but we have to file the information. And the property owners have until November 1st to pay their assessments, or we put it on their, uh, property tax. So how does that work if they have until the first to pay, but we're not having a hearing until the 10th?
So, Mr. Mayor, we give them a chance to pay the outstanding balance before we add the, uh, fee. So your job tonight is to either approve or adjust or pare down this assessment roll. And I can talk specifically about a couple of things. But then we would send a letter to let them know that the reason the November 1st date is highlighted is that that's a little bit variable. Um, in other words, you, you could accept payment, you know, right up till a day or two before the hearing if you wanted to. And then we have our hearing, and then the official assessment roll then is approved that night and gets sent to the county by staff by the 30th of November.
So it's the 30th is, is when it has to be to the county?
Correct. They like it a little earlier if you can get it there, but that's the deadline. So what, this is basically a list of those that have unpaid balances. It's not something that I decide, it's brought before you so that you can ask questions about it and, um, determine the official assessment roll.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake. So I assume this first one, when you got, okay, six, one, twenty-two, they didn't pay, pay it. So then it added another, then twenty-two, it added more money. And then it, and because we, we kept asking them to pay and they refused, then the amount kept mounting. That's what that is.
Right, and the, Mr. Mayor.
Planner Stockman.
The biggest thing is there was no contact at all, there was no improvement to the property, no change in, you know, the compliance factor, so.
So the question, so again, I think we have people in the audience and people online that may be interested in our process on this. Obviously, there's a calendar of events here, assessment timeline in our packet. But, so we've got eight items on here. And some of these go back to, the first one here goes back to 2018. Second one goes back to 2011. Third one goes back to seven, one, twenty-two. So they're, they're kind of all over the place. The fourth one is not on our, our list. Fifth one goes back to 21, sixth one goes back to 19, and the seventh one, or the eighth one goes back to the 19, 2019. And the seventh one is again on our list, but, uh, issue's resolved, it's, it's on there. So the, the consistency of the charges, and because we've gone all the way back to 2011 on some of these, and some of these are closed or not on the list. Help me understand how we go from a hundred dollars on one to thirty-two hundred dollars on another. What, what is the process that this guy got hit eight, eight hundred dollars each time? And the six percent per year is inconsistent, and yet the paperwork we have in front of us shows June of 22, June of 22, July of 22, and August of 22. And yet there's a different amount of the administrative fees, and it totals up thirty-two hundred dollars. This other person, there's a, goes back to September of 21, and it's a hundred dollars. What, how do we understand this so that, and again, part of it is, you know, because we have public documents like this, and people look at it and say, well, you've got 24 items on here and eight on here, and these numbers vary significantly. What are, what are we seeing?
So for starters, the dog violations are fifty dollars. They are a lesser amount, like dogs running at large and, um, barking dogs, et cetera. So then the other ones are two hundred dollars per offense. So if there were multiple violations, it's two hun, two hundred dollars per. So the first one on the list had four violations, two hundred dollars each. The reason that the administrative fees are different is because it goes back to the due date that the first citation was due, the second citation was due. That's why it goes down in amount for the administrat, administrative fees.
So, so let's take that first one. On, on six, one, twenty-two, he was fined eight hundred dollars. So you're saying there were four violations.
Right.
Separate violations, so, um, and he was charged administrative fees of fourteen dollars and forty-seven cents.
He hasn't been charged those administrative fees yet, that's being added.
Okay.
If he doesn't pay.
So then, three weeks later, he gets another eight hundred dollars. Is this, is this for more incidents? Or is this the same four now, two weeks older?
Continued, same violations continued.
So every three weeks, he's getting
Yeah.
Another eight hundred dollars?
So the ordinance allows fourteen days to pay the citation. If they haven't paid the citation, or resolved the issue, or called to discuss it to ask for more time, or whatever the case may be, um, there was no contact whatsoever, then they can be sent an additional citation.
Okay, so then, uh, July, so three weeks or, or, three weeks later, four weeks later now, in August, we get another eight hundred dollars, nothing in September, and nothing here in October. Are you assuming that there's also, you've heard nothing from this property owner at this point?
Well, I cut off the, when I calculated the fees and everything, it was on August 24th. So we delayed, kind, the city council delayed consideration of this. The memo was dated, date 24, 22 originally. So that's why the, there hasn't been any citations or actions on these since then.
All right. So the next one goes back to September of 2016, actually, the complaint date was March of 2011. There was a site visit on September six, sixteen. There's another complaint on October of 2017, another site visit in September of 19. And yet we just started, so he's, this person has three violations, it looks like, for six hundred dollars. And, and his clock started in July of 2022. And from the looks of it, out of the ninety-plus vehicles, three were removed.
Yeah, this gentleman, Mr. Mayor, kind of waxes and wanes, he'll, he'll go for a little while, make some improvements, and then either backtrack or not do anything. So he's
If I remember right, sometimes it, it, it goes down by three vehicles and then up by
Yes.
Any number of vehicles.
Yeah, right.
So why is this different than the one before that where they were getting charged from June on, even though they're older than the first one? Why is it just six hundred dollars?
Because he had three violations, not four.
Yeah, but I mean, so we, we charged the first guy four times for his four violations. This guy has three violations, we only charged him twice.
Well, he's, well, he's been in contact too, so, you know, he's, he's provided me photos of vehicles removed, he's made contact, but then, you know, it, then he quits, so, you know, that's
Has he been assessed before?
He has.
Did he pay? Was he assessed on his taxes?
He was assessed, yeah. But he has paid citations as well. So I'm not really sure what the
I heard somebody say something over here.
Mr. Mayor, I was just saying that it's, seems like if they make no contact, that's a huge issue. And if they make some efforts, then we're giving them more grace. Because we're saying they're trying, and so maybe they're going to step forward. So she's, she, this guy's going forward, back, forward, and so she's playing this yo-yo game with him, but he's making efforts, so
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what
That was our decision, if they were making efforts, then we wouldn't
Yeah, it just, you know, seeing, because all we have is what's on paper here, so it's trying to figure out what the logic is behind it. So there's an explanation, he, he does something. The, the logic says since March of 2011, he's had ninety-plus inoperable vehicles, so three here, take away three and add seven is
Small progress, but there is progress.
So, so a thousand dollars, I'm not sure it's going to cover the city's cost, but anyway, the, the first one, going back to the first one, outdoor storage on a vacant property, it could be he's not responding because it's a vacant property. And this assessing the, on the tax roll may or may not have a big difference. But that being said, we'll go on to number three. And this complaint date was actually seven, one, twenty-two. And he must have six violations.
Yeah, he's got multiple violations, correct. And the reason, this one, if you recall, some of you may recall that have been here longer, uh, this property was problematic from day one. This was the Superior Mason recite where, um, you never finished the building. The site grading and completion was never done. Um, the son kind of kept control of it for a while, then the, then the owner came back, and he was working diligently earlier, sort of the end of 21 and earlier this year, to attempt to get a CEO, and he actually cleaned up the property somewhat. But then without a CEO, he went and leased the building. And now there's some issues with, you know, piles of dirt sitting where the stormwater pond used to be, and other things like that, no permit for the fuel tanks, outdoor storage issues, and grading. So the engineer has told me that grading has to be restored to the original plan from 2007, or he has to have a new grading plan prepared. So he's
Just a reminder, 2007 was before we were even a city.
Right.
So this has been a
Yep.
Problem property. And, and I want to explain to people too, that, you know, we've, we've had some people concerned about how we're progressing on, on violations. For those that are interested in the back of the room, you, we have a packet that shows you everything we have here. It's also online, you can see the, um, some of the photos of the violations, so you can understand why the neighbors might be upset with some of these things.
Is it a packet in the back of the room?
There should be a packet in the back of the room. It's not?
There's just one shared.
There's just one, one packet there. I'm sorry, I was mistaken, it's not posted online at this point, so I imagine it will be.
Um, I can give them mine. If somebody wants, if someone wants another copy, you may have mine here of some of the pictures.
All right, so there again, he's got six violations, or the property owner has six violations. Five dollar administrative fee proposed. All right, so if we go to the fifth one, parking a semi truck in a residential area.
I think you skipped Mr., the dog violation?
I skipped the dog one, because you said that's fifty dollars, and that's a I don't have, I don't have any information on that in the packet here, because that's not part of the spreadsheet.
Technically, I took it off of there because we haven't had any additional complaints. So it's a, that one is basically a matter of, you want to collect that hundred dollars to pay for the, um, dog catcher fees that you had to pay, because his animals were picked up multiple times.
Does that hundred dollars cover it?
Not all of it probably, but at least part of it.
Okay. All right, so this, this person was first noted on September of 21. A year later, we're following up with a new complaint. Verified on seven, seventeen of 22. And so we're, has there been a contact with this? Says the last contact was seven, seventeen, so you actually did contact the truck owner?
Um, no, he, the contact was from the complainant, and then I went out and actually verified it. Prior to that, I had driven by multiple times, and the vehicle wasn't there. So we had multiple complaints from residents in the area. But I, it was hard to basically catch him, you know, with the parking, even though he had multiple complaints.
Yeah, that was, I, I know the residents were very sensitive, because that's a brand-new road, and
Right, yeah.
And we've had those filed.
And he had
Is he going to be surprised when he gets this on his taxes?
And he had issues years prior with the same, um, problem, and I had been to his property. So he was well aware that it was not allowed.
So when you have something like this, this is something that's happening over the years, is there a way of, because like some of these, obviously, you've been saying it's been since 2011. This one here appears to be a repeat of a violation he was aware of, and it's just, you're assessing him on the most recent violation.
Correct, I don't believe he was ever cited before. But he got a notice and then ignored it, and then got the citation.
All right, number six, semi trailer, storage, inoperable vehicles, junk debris, he's got five violations going back to 2019.
So that property on West Fordbrook, they did remove the semi trailer, and they removed the RV. So
And three Jeeps.
Yep, she has
And several loads to the dump.
She's been, um, quite cooperative. She still has a few violations, but I would recommend for that one either reducing it.
So it says here, site inspection was scheduled for seven, 20, 22, did that happen?
Yeah, that happened. So verified that those items weren't that gone. She still has an inoperable vehicle, and some kind of random stuff around the yard, but tires and such. Uh, but I wouldn't be opposed to that one being minimized.
What would you recommend?
Maybe two hundred. Or just, I would say two hundred is fair. Because it did probably cost her a bit to get that
Has this treatment been going on since 2019, or are we in our third year?
Yep, that one's been a long time coming too. So she, she was quite cooperative this year, in past years, she's kind of not been so much.
Is there a, a conversation on a assessment, or what, what changed the cooperative spirit?
Well, she received the citation of that amount, so that's, I believe, what spurred her to move, yeah.
How many times have you been out there?
Hmm, at least four this year. And some were just drive-bys because it, it was visible.
Is that, those visits, would they be charged to the city?
Uh, yeah, sometimes they're grouped together with other visits or, but yeah, they
And what rate would you be charging with? If you went out and talked to them on-site, did an inspection, what rate would you be charging?
The sixty-six.
All right, the next one, Mr. Weishelt, outdoor storage, living in a camper, he had three violations. He's been moved to the, uh, issue resolved, uh, but his goes back to 2020. You're saying it's resolved, but the six hundred and thirty-six dollars is an attempt to reclaim some of the cost, or?
Well, yeah, that's your choice, um, I've been out there at least three times.
Let me say, three times I know of, but you've been out there more than that.
Yeah, probably, well
You've certainly been fielding more calls than
Well, I've been to the neighbors, and I've, yeah. Well, see, he paid the escrow, remember, for the temporary habitation permit. So we had that escrow from which we
It was separate from the violation, though, that was
Yeah, separate from the violation. So, but he, you know, he did comply ultimately, but, yeah, it's
But that took a squadron of you to
Quite a few of us, including the attorney, yeah, and the administrator, to go out there.
So again, probably doesn't cover our cost, but
Correct.
All right, and number eight.
Uh, this is an illegal accessory building. This is the property along Northern Boulevard. Uh, they have a non-conforming accessory building that's been there for years. If you recall, they bought the property and tore down the old farmhouse. Um, and then they put up a, a shed. And, you know, I get a lot of calls for people that want to put up a shed on vacant property, and the ordinance, um, doesn't allow that, so, you know, fair is fair, I guess, in my mind. Now, if you feel differently, then, you know.
There again, this is, this goes back to 2019. Looks like the last, he spoke with them was 2019. Any, any contact, communication, anything since then?
No, nothing besides the letters, he hasn't called, I requested a, you know, another meeting or site inspection, and he just ignored.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
Why, I mean, I'm not, I'm just curious, why don't we allow anything like, if it meets our standards, why can't people put a shed on a lot they Why don't we allow anything like, if it meets our standards, why can't people put a shed on a lot they purchased that they might be using for
The, uh, the ordinances don't allow a, a freestanding building without a residential.
Okay, and the reason?
I'll have to go back and see what was put in place, but ultimately, uh, you just have a freestanding building with no property owner there to watch over what's going on in there. This is a kind of a garage built back in the old gravel pit and they started a little racetrack around it. So neighbors' concern was, one, they have no idea who is coming and going. If you ever talked to the people across the road, uh, gangs of kids were coming and going and using that building and for a variety of things back there. It was one of our sheriff watch spots. It just, it becomes an accumulation spot for activities where you can't go in and say to the property owner, what's going on here because they have no idea. And so it, it became a, a constant call for the sheriff.
Oh, I see.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Stockman.
If I might respond, um, to the council member. Uh, partly, it's related to property values too, and if we have these buildings sitting out there, we basically just have a big storage lot, right? If
Oh, I see.
So that's kind of part of it. And then as, you know, if they put a building up, then they're probably, there may be things outside and it
Sure, sure.
And it's, it's, it's been, it's come up a number of other times.
So someone purchased that building, I mean, purchased that property and built a house on it? Could they keep what's on there?
If it meets setback, yeah. I'm not sure if it does.
Okay.
And that was, that was the understanding, the people that were looking to buy it were going to build a house and then they ripped down the house that was there, which to be rebuilt would have to be set back further.
Yes.
But they decided not to build a house and, and just decided to make a play area in the back, but it was the gravel pit. And the other, there's other problems with that property. The, the gravel that was taken from there actually was used to build twenty-two. So it's been a long time. And they went below grade. They went below the level of Northern Boulevard. So the property has to be restored as well and the property owner hasn't addressed that either. So using the property without restoration to required levels and, uh, and properly building a house at, setback and everything else. He just thought he lives in another city and thought he could store stuff up here and let his kids use it as a play area. Obviously, the neighbors that are immediately surrounding that got fairly concerned and then the, and then the sheriff started getting a lot of calls. So this one in particular, but in general, as, as Liz is saying, that we've had a number of people say, can I build an, uh, an outbuilding and then come build a house sometime later? And that can only be done under controlled conditions. We have to have a deadline.
Just wondering how that works.
In the past, it's been a temporary structure and that's what Mr. Weishelt was under here, was he came in and applied for temporary dwelling while he was building a house. And, um, so we do, we do work with people, but I'm just not sure four hundred dollars is going to get us attention either, so.
Well, it's rumored that he's thinking about selling, so I don't know if that's true.
But his letter went out for, no, this might be a typo. We have administrative letter went out four twenty-two nineteen, but the complaint was five ten nineteen.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be a typo.
There was a notice on four fifteen twenty-one and a final notice on seven eighteen of two thousand and twenty-two. Administrative citation on eight twenty-two, which is why you're saying he's got two violations, we're just going to charge him for one month, even though this has been going on for three years.
Right, so there was no building permitted bigger than two hundred square feet. Uh, yep.
Alright, so council, you have an explanation to all of them. Some, the assessments seem a little low for all the work that's gone into them, some seem a little high. Uh, if the people are cooperating, we don't want to be discouraging them. Discussion, what would you like to, uh, see done? Start with number one, thirty-two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents. We cut off the billing in, uh, August, so there's been no charges for September or October. Four violations, um, no response from the owner and as you can see, vacant property and this is what the neighbors have been looking at. Or if you drive by on
Is the owner live there?
No, it's vacant. Um, it, I was told by a neighbor that the, it's so mold-infested that it's not inhabitable. I don't know.
It's interesting, he doesn't respond.
Yeah, it's, I don't know.
Is this the, uh, person from Minneapolis?
Correct, yes.
Owns a lot of properties in Minneapolis that he doesn't respond to either.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
To Ms. Stockman, so we know that he doesn't live on that property. No one lives on that property. So when you're sending these letters out, are you sending them to the Norris Lake or are you sending them to the address on the tax rolls?
The tax roll address.
Alright, so he is getting notice. He's, it's not that they're sitting there.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, they've never gotten a returned one or anything.
Okay.
So the council knows if, if we continue to not get response, uh, one of the options is we can abate this property ourselves. We can pay somebody to come in, take the vehicles. Um, the, there's a little bit of a problem with that because you have to give them a certain time to reclaim. If they'd like those vehicles that are sitting out front there and think they're worth anything, we have to then store them until they can redeem them if they so choose. And then we would pay the cost of that cleanup ourselves and then assess that back to the property. And if the property doesn't sell for a long time, we just sit on those costs until the property sells. So if there's no response, that's one option the city has. And I'm going to guess, from what I read in the papers, this isn't going to move the dial much.
Miss what?
It's not going to, it's not going to affect him much. This is, this is peanuts compared to
So let's just leave it or increase it eight hundred, two more times, whatever, that should, and that's my thinking, and get him to pay at least that.
So you're recommending that we include the September and October charges and assess accordingly?
Yes, unless there's a reason someone doesn't agree.
I would, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I would agree with Councilmember Blake.
Alright.
Mr. Mayor? So, well, we could, it's actually too late now to send the additional citations. After the assessment, we can, if he still doesn't comply, we can continue sending citations. But there has to be a designated cutoff and if this, in this case, it was August twenty-fourth. So we can't send him the September, October ones right now.
Alright, so he can, he can go with the thirty-two hundred and if he continues not to respond, just keep the
Keep the tab rolling.
Keep the tab open.
Okay, got it.
Alright, so number one is go with the, uh, the assessment as presented here and if there's no response, keep the tab open. And see if we can get something done this year. Alright, item number two. Lots and lots and lots of vehicles.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
To Ms. Stockman, so he has paid some violations in the past?
He has paid. I'm guessing he may pay if we give him that opportunity before the assessment. Um, like I said, he takes baby steps and then
Well, I just remember the agreement that we put together at the time was, you take out so many per month and you are not bringing any more back in.
Right.
So he may have paid assessments and making baby steps, but he's violating the agreement that we made with him.
Correct.
Um, so the, the two six hundred dollars, that is the max we can charge him?
Right now it is, correct. But again, we can keep citing. We can cite every two weeks, so it'd be twelve hundred dollars a month.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I believe one of the problems and, and it, there's a whole host of reasons for it occurring, but we have not been diligent in follow-up with the code compliance, um, complaints and adhering to what agreements we've been made, we've made with, with residents. And so they figure if you're not going to call, I'm not going to write a check. So I just think, again, we need to, and it's part of tonight's discuss, discussion, is that we need to somehow go, get back on a, the, 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 a wheel that keeps churning. And we still, we continue to be productive in what we're doing with the residents that have code compliance issues and that those, the goal is to get them cleaned up. But if you're not going to adhere to what you've agreed to or you're going to ignore us, then it's going to cost you. And, and that's their choice. That's not our choice. That's that resident's choice, that property owner's choice. Right, so, so I would agree to go with the twelve hundred and keep the tab open.
And, and I agree, that's going to be obviously the next thing on our agenda. We'll be talking about the process and how, how we got here and how do we avoid getting here in the future. When you're dealing with something that goes back to two thousand and eleven, we shouldn't be sitting here in two thousand and twenty-two saying, well, we're going to go back two months. You know, I mean, this is, obviously, as, as Councilmember Rainville says, they don't take it seriously if you're going to go, you've been waiting eleven years. I'll, I'll pay six hundred dollars or twelve hundred dollars. I can get that off a one vehicle.
Can we, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
Do we have recourse of going, taking all that out ourselves?
Yep.
And did we just talk about that?
Yep.
Okay.
And if, and if Administrator Lainer can tell me where he's going to put ninety vehicles?
Flashback.
Yeah, he's going to take ninety.
Yeah, put them in his farm.
We'd have to do one of those, uh, New York
So we have to store those? We can't just take them to the junk?
Yeah, there is, there is a process because we, we've had this with some other people that, uh, you know, we thought, well, we'll just take them in and we'll give you the, we'll take our hauling fee out and give you whatever's left on the vehicles. Um, and legally, we have to hold them for a certain redemption time. And if they're not redeemed in that time, then there's, there's a process for them.
But if, Mr. Mayor, if they redeem, I'll never back where we were. I don't understand. If we can re, if he can redeem those cars?
Well, it's, it would be very
That he can put it all back right on his property.
But the idea would be that he'd want them back to junk them himself.
So we would make that a stipulation, that if you take them back, you junk them yourself?
No, no, that, that'd be basically what he'd want them for is, I want the money from the, the junking them. But yes, no, we, there, there's a, if you look at our newsletter, there's half a dozen to a dozen haulers around here that are quite willing going to take them out and haul them away and, and give money for them. I mean, you could also say, if, if we're not involved in it, we want to cover any costs the city has, but after that, the haulers can just say, here's the money. We haul the way ninety cars, you get a hundred bucks a car.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
To Councilmember Blake, I'm going to see if I can find it here. Shortly before, um, Administrator Boyle's left, he sent out an email to us and it was in regards to a travel trailer that somebody left on a city road. And we'd been holding it and unable to locate the owner or it was not responsive. He spelt out all of what we needed to do in that email.
Okay.
So I'll try to find that if, if not, um, it, but it's, I think
And we went through that process and that thing is still sitting in the public works.
Yeah, so
It's a long process.
Okay.
And it costs us money.
It costs us money because you have to public notice and you have to It'd be, it'd be nice if we just go in there and say, take it all the way, take the money for the junking and cover our costs.
But we can cover our costs, whatever happens to that stuff.
No.
Not necessarily.
We don't, you'd never do.
Now, again, we can take our costs and assess it to the property because, but there's a formal abatement process that we'd have to do legally saying, we're abating, here's what we're going to do and here's, here's how we're going to cover that cost. We did that with a property here and the homeowner actually let us abate and then they paid us monthly until they got the whole thing paid off.
Okay.
And they, you know, rather than assess it to their taxes, they came in and actually paid it. So we, we try to be as cooperative as we can. But again, if, if you're not getting any cooperation, then nothing the city does is going to be cheap. Alright, so right now, we're saying, at this point, because we just started the citation process in July, we're stuck with twelve hundred dollars because that's all we noted. Right?
Correct.
Um, had we been doing this since two thousand and eleven, then it would be a bigger assessment. But again, we'll, we'll learn from that. So right now, we're saying in item number two, go with the twelve hundred, ten dollars and fifty-five cents. Item number three, St. Francis Boulevard.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Councilmember Rainville.
Can I just, you had said something, whatever the city does, it's not going to be cheap? I, or it's
It's not going to be inexpensive.
Inexpensive, but it's, it's, I, I just want to be clear in that it's not what we charge. It's what we're being charged to haul, store, all of those, yes.
Public notices.
We're trying to make money on it. That's what it's going to cost the city based on third-party vendors that we have to go through to
We would be likely, the city would break even on that. But it would be an expensive process because of the legal requirements.
Right, I just want that clear.
Yep. No, we, we wouldn't make any money on it, trust me. Alright, item number three, St. Francis Boulevard, twelve hundred dollars plus five thirty-three in administrative, twelve oh five thirty-three.
I say, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I, I, I would, uh, suggest we go with that dollar amount and keep the tab open.
So when we say keep the tab open, does that then pick up September, October?
Nope, it's moving forward.
So we'd have to issue a new citation?
We could start tomorrow. I just haven't done anything since, until we talked about it.
So at this point, they've been cited and if we said the tab's going to stay open, then we'd have to recite them and say the clock's still running?
Correct.
Okay. So item number three, go with the assessed amount as Item number four, the dog issue. Repeat, we had two instances, fifty bucks an instance, instance, and there's been no complaints since when?
Correct.
When was the last time we had a complaint?
It was about, well, probably the, either the end of last year or the first thing this year. The previous, uh, animal control officer had called me and said, I've been out there three times, can you please cite him? So I did. So he, yeah, he's gone through the summer.
Yeah, it was going to be this year. I remember, this is over on Twin Parkway?
Yeah, I think it was early this year, like maybe March.
Definitely, we had a complaint out there this year.
Yeah, yeah.
But nothing since, so at this point, one hundred and five ninety-five. Okay with that? Yakima, parking semi truck. It's been an issue before, but it was only cited in, um, July. Citation was July. Why is it, uh, just two hundred dollars?
Uh, one, just one violation is the parking of the semi.
Yeah, but everybody else?
Oh, you mean because I didn't re
Yeah, reissue like
Because I've been by and it hasn't been there.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't know if this is just lucky or
Alright, so you have an, you have to go back and say it's, it is, it's unchanged.
I have to validate each time.
So when, on this first one, you went back, every couple of weeks, you went back and said it's still there.
Right, exactly. I have photos from each visit, right?
Alright, so item number five is two hundred, two dollars and one cent. Alright, we're good with that one?
Yep.
West Fordbrook, semi trailer, living camper, junk debris. This one you would consider reducing. I'm going to say that if you've been out there four times, I don't know if there's been other conversations on the phone, but, uh, let's say it's four times sixty-six. Is that a reasonable amount? Has the office staff had to do anything with this?
Hmm, not really.
So again, if we cover, if we think we're covering cost, if she's been out there four times and she's charging us sixty-six dollars a time?
Two sixty-four, you want to charge them?
I would go for three hundred.
300?
Mr. Mayor?
Will you round it off all the time?
Yep. 300 once?
That's fine.
Any other questions?
And this one would be, keep, so when we're done with these, I'm going to make a motion, but it would be to keep the tab open again.
Okay.
But it, you know, again, encourage them, if this is one who's actually working with you.
Yeah.
Thank them for that and if they keep working, the, the tab will be clear.
Right.
All right. Uh, item number seven. 635.90.
I would, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I would move that we assess that amount.
Okay. Council, good with that?
Yeah.
And number eight. I personally think 400 isn't going to move the needle, but if we, again, go with what's been cited and keep the tab open. So basically, we'll recite all of these tomorrow.
Yep.
So, Mr. Mayor?
401.78. Councilmember Rainville.
Um, I would move that we direct our, Ms. Stockman to reassess any of those that are still open as of tomorrow and to continue with the assessment process.
So obviously, the first thing, got to make sure that these are still in violation.
I think that they all are.
Except we've already seen that number seven has been cleaned up.
Well, we didn't say to keep that one open, so.
All right, so we've agreed on the numbers?
Yep.
Motion to, we've got a resolution here. In the process, do you want to move the resolution?
Mr. Mayor, a commission to approve the assessment for the unpleaded slate of files for the ones that we discussed through the last 45 minutes.
A second.
Motion by Councilmember Aldrich, second by Councilmember Blake. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we've got the assessment list. I'm sorry, code enforcement updates and process. All right. We've got the code enforcement updates and process and what we've just been discussing indicates to me that the system isn't working well. And we, we've got a spreadsheet here that goes back to And site visits that go back to 2013, 2012. We have, we are a complaint-driven city. And so you get on this list ultimately because there's been a formal complaint and you make this list because after a formal complaint and a verification through a process which we have here, things aren't progressing to the point of completion. All right? How you get off this list is a mystery right now. But how you get on this list should be very clear in to anybody involved. We, we need to make sure that we have a process that's written in laypeople's language, so it's, it's complete, accurate, and understandable. We need to make sure that staff is getting direction as to what the council's looking for. So when we first came up with the topics for tonight's workshop, it was last year, year and a half anyway, when we first started talking about CUPs and IUPs. CUPs are conditional use permits that people are granted for use of their land. IUPs are interim use permits typically for home-based businesses operating in a residential area. Our, our instructions, as I recall, were to, let's focus on conditional use permit updates because there's potential for people with a conditional use permit in a residential property to be being taxed at a commercial rate because that property was a commercial property in a residential area. Okay? And so our intention was to focus on conditional use permits because a number of people, when they bought their property, may not even know they had a conditional use permit on there. And if they would get rid of that, it could affect their property taxes. And so what we proposed as a city was, let's find out who wants to get rid of their conditional use permits because that's a process that we have to work with the county on. You can move that aside if you like there. So if people want to get rid of this, we said, let's, let's give them an opportunity where the city will cover the cost of the paperwork filed with the county. So if you want to get rid of this conditional use permit and free that up, it keeps us from having to track it and keeps you from having to potentially pay commercial property taxes. So that was, as I recall, the council's direction was, let's start with conditional use permits that are inactive and people don't want anymore. Track conditional use permits that are active and then we can go back and make sure those property owners understand the permitted uses of that property. And then following that, we would do the same thing with IUPs. Interim use permits expire if they aren't active for a year. There are certain conditions that cause them to expire. Conditional use permits go with the land and can be used by a new property owner if they meet the conditions of that permit exactly. Interim use permits expire when the land is sold and you'd have to start from scratch under that. So then the intention was to get through the conditional use permits, get rid of the inactive ones, make sure the current ones are meeting the conditions permitted, move on to interim use permits and make sure that they're meeting the conditions or are inactive and we would wipe those out. Part of that, from the city's standpoint, is we have, we have 24 page, 24 pages of permits, we have a lot of pages of permits that we have to track. When we're doing EDA development, Economic Development Authority, we need to know who's got businesses where because that affects how you get grants and how you apply for money. When we tried to do this two years ago with ARVIG, we found out the city didn't have a good understanding or record-keeping of what conditional use and interim use permits were out there. So we didn't know how many businesses were running, so when the state and the county were asking us for information, we couldn't produce it, which is why we started that process. So my understanding was that the direction to staff was focus on conditional use permits first, interim use permits second. And what was taken a lot of time was this sheet we just went through on code violations. And the understanding that I recall was that we asked that a code violation be focused on if it is imminent health and safety issues to surrounding neighbors. If there's something that's going to explode, something that's going to contaminate, something that's going to cause harm or, or other safety issues, obviously, that's a code compliance issue that's very clear and needs to be responded to quickly. But the intention was to, other than, you know, some of these like we addressed tonight that are, are very obvious and seen from the road and we're not getting a response to, not to put a lot of attention into that process while we cleaned up the other. Because it's going to, it's going to clean up a lot of work for the staff. We could have them everything on our CUP and IUP list electronically stored and available should we have other need for it, like we, when we're applying for grants or subsidies of any sort. So one of the things that confused me is, is we started getting attention to the code compliance activities more than the CUP and IUP. And we have limited resources and obviously, your time's limited too, but working with staff, how do we get back on that track? So in that discussion, we go back to the process for code enforcement updates and the process itself. And looking at what we've been given, this document, Section 5 Administrative Enforcement from our, our ordinance, pages 1 dash 23 through 29, one seems out of date. We have a, a list of definitions that doesn't include all of the things that we refer to in some of our other documents. We have language that, this council has spent a lot of time discussing what it is we want to do when we're enforcing the code. And as you've heard tonight, we've, we've gone out of our way to try and work with people. If, if you've got something that goes back, you know, 20 years and it's not resolved, obviously, we're not heavy-handed in what we're doing. Probably not diligent enough in some of these cases, like we've addressed tonight. On the other hand, if somebody's being cooperative or they don't understand what potential violation may be there, how do we educate? And I'm, and the councils discussed this repeatedly in the past, our job first and foremost is to educate. And if we have ordinances on the books that don't make sense, that are out of date, are not understandable, it's our job to change those. And there is a process for that and there's public hearings that are involved in that. So that we can make sure that it, what we're doing makes sense to the residents who live here, to the comp plan that we've agreed on for 10 years. But let's make sure that as best we can, what people move out here to do, they can do and enjoy the property they bought. Now, as stated before, health and safety, when you're impinging on your neighbor's health and safety, we have to respond. And that's one of the obligations of government is to keep people safe. And so if something is going to cause impairment to your, your neighbor's health or safety or their animal's health or safety, that would be something that we jump on pretty In, in other situations, we have a process that says there's a complaint, we want to make sure we're educating people. Because sometimes people move out here and they don't know the rules and regulations. And so the first and foremost you want to do is educate them saying, here's the ordinance, here's where you find them. So it's, it's incumbent on our administrative staff to make sure that we have current policies available online. So if somebody says, I think there's a, a, a potential violation on your property, they can go right to the book and say, oh, you're right. You know, I can't launch hot air balloons from my backyard, it says so right here, or whatever it might be. You can see it in black and white. And so there shouldn't be a question as to what is it that I'm being questioned on here on use of my property? Now again, people come out here and say, I bought five acres or I bought 40 acres, I should be able to do whatever I want. And we found that on five acres, you can do things that are very annoying and irritating to your neighbors and there are ordinances and regulations against those things. You know, operating your machine shop at 3:00 in the morning outside your neighbor's window is going to be a nuisance violation. And so your, your use of your land, as it impacts your neighbors, are where we ended up devising our ordinances. But there again, the first thing we should be doing is educate. We have an issue with snow plowing. People tend to push snow across the roads, which is violation of a state statute. But if you're new out here and you just got this fancy new tractor and it seems the most convenient thing, take it out of the garage and push it right across the road, you don't know that. We shouldn't be coming in with a citation saying, oh, you did something wrong, sorry you didn't know about it, but here's the citation and have a uniformed officer give it to you. We should be educating first and foremost. So what the council did a few years back is revisited the letters that go out and the terminology so that when somebody gets a letter from the city, we are doing everything we can to make it educational and not confrontational. You don't want to automatically be referring to the sheriff and penalties and attorneys. And so we tried to avoid those in the initial letter. It's an educational opportunity, here's what we've been told, could you work with us and help us understand if this is true or not? And if it's not, we can go back and say, put that one to bed, nothing there to see. Or yeah, there is a specific violation, we were told they're launching hot air balloons from their backyard, it's a fire hazard, they're not going to do that anymore. And so as I was going through the, the process here, one of the things that I thought we had, had removed from it were what I'll call trigger words. You know, when we start talking about alleged violators, as we start talking about suspected code violations, you know, I thought we had cleaned this up so that it was very clear that very first step should be, here's what we've been told. So if I go back to this list that we just went through with our eight violations, one of the categories is complainant date. I would expect that everything on these three pages would have a formal complaint filed with the city. So that we can go back and say, yes, there is a formal complaint and it was very specific as to what potential violation was. Now I will, I will give you an example of a, a resident who recently filed a complaint. And I forget how many pages long it was, but they went through our ordinance and they said, here's what's happening on my neighbor's property and here's your city ordinance and here's the violations. And they spelled out in detail, very clearly, what they saw and where it was in our, our ordinance. And a quick visit out there said, yes, they're right, here's what the ordinance says, here's what we're seeing. And relatively quickly, now I don't know if it's fully resolved yet because of remediation, but the property owner now knows with, with specifics, there's a city ordinance. And again, all our ordinances aren't perfect, but if we find where they're not, we can fix that. But it's pretty clear, these ordinances were clearly being violated and the resident took it upon themselves, rather than the city to doing this, to say, here's the violation and presented it to the city. I would expect that same effort on the part of the city saying, here's the complaint, here's the viol, here's the ordinance, do we see that? So first and foremost should be the complaint. So my question would be to Administrator Lehner, you presented us with this information, do you have a, a list of all these complaints on these three pages?
So I received, Mr. Mayor?
Got that.
Yep. So I, I did, Ms. Stockman and myself, just recently as yesterday, started looking through the complaints. At this time, I can't verify or deny that I have 24, all of them in there, but I do have a stack of them that we need to verify that complaints did come in for all of these that are on the code compliance report. So as we sit here tonight, I can't tell you 100% that they're all there, but we are working through that.
All right. So as a council, are we still in agreement that we should be seeing complaints in order to ask staff to move forward?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
See, two nods and a yes?
Well, this, this is where I struggle a little bit because you have somebody that complains and, you know, we're trying to manage the gray here, right? Because some of the cases that we've got fines going out seem fairly egregious and we got 90. we got 90 inoperable cars or we got an abandoned home with a bunch of stuff in front of it that seems to be falling down. That feels like barely, I think everyone can nod their heads, yes. The problem that we have is, you go past some farm sites which has a bunch of stuff hanging or out that would or would not, would not pass code and no one says anything. You go somewhere else and somebody has two boats out and the neighbor flips out on it and what do you do there? So, you can go down the street, five blocks from here and see all kinds of code violations, but the neighbors haven't said anything. And then you get that one neighbor that seems to be fussier than the rest and all of a sudden, the guy has a problem and it's not 90 cars, it's, I've got a fence that doesn't meet code or I've got something that's out there that, to me, it feels gray. So this is where I struggle with this code violation stuff. And this is where I think our residents do because you have, if your neighbor's, if your neighbor's doesn't like you, he can find something wrong. And if you have a neighbor that could care less, you can have 30 boats and five cars out there and no one says anything. So it pisses people off because it's not consistent.
I agree with that. That's a thing I always had, had trouble with too, is that our, our prerequisite is the neighbor has to make a complaint. And, and that's, that's tough. And also some neighbors don't want to do that because it's gonna cause issues with the relationship with the neighbor, but the neighbor is violating, clear, I mean, can drive down the road, she could drive down and see the violations are huge, but we, we don't give her any possibility to, to maybe report that violation.
And we have like, three different levels of city dwelling, right? We have a 40 acre farm which can have numerous violations. You can have the five acre farms where five acre establishment. And then we have some more cluster homes which, it's a lot tighter, so it's a lot easier to see where you have, okay, if you're on the one acre parcels or the two acre parcels and there's six or seven cars laying out there, that's, so that's, that's where we struggle as a community and as a, that's where I struggle as a council. I'm like, the ones that we looked at, they've been a problem for six years, no one's taken care of them and like, I drove past that one tonight and it's like, it's, it's an abandoned place with a bunch of crap hanging out there. So it's like, we've got to do something about that and I can understand if we have somewhat of a farm, a pole barn or a pseudo pole barn with a dirt bike track and kids are going out there and racing dirt bikes and it's non-supervised and it's, I can understand some of that, right? But I get into these managing these gray areas where farm sites where people drive past them every day should be violations and no one says anything. And you have one guy that writes a 13-page document on all the different code violations. I'm guessing his neighbor is not gonna send him a Christmas card.
You know, and, and, and so, it is a gray area and, and this is for the council to decide, but has, in the past, the council has decided that we are complaint driven.
So, but it's like...
Well, let, let me finish because one of the things we've encouraged is, if there's an issue with your neighbor, it's tough. If you report them, it's not gonna go, you're probably not gonna get the Christmas card if you, if you get the three pages of, here's what the ordinance says. What we're trying to do is get neighbors to resolve issues to begin with. If, if you've got something that's sitting outside your window and you can say, could you take care of that? Because you can do that and they can say, no.
Right.
It's not gonna go any better for you if you just report them and say, I'm trying to work with you, but you didn't, so, you know, I did file a complaint. There are people that, that live next to some messier properties that choose for whatever reason to either, you know, I, I live in now then and I understand that, or I'd rather not, I've got a pretty good relationship with my neighbor, but I don't want to mess it up with that. The option is, as you're saying, we let somebody like Planner take on the code enforcement role and go around and, and everybody in now then, most people, you could find a violation of one of those ordinances if you know the ordinances pretty well. That's not why people move out here. Again, as I said earlier on, can we look at the impact on the neighbors? And so first and foremost, that's why I say, do we have a complaint on all of these things? Is, is there a legitimate complaint on something here? Or sometimes it's just neighbors mad at neighbors. And you know what? You, you know, your dog ran over my property and, and did something and I'm gonna, I'm gonna call in a violation on you. And that's where we have to have some discretion, where we say, does this really exist? You know, it shouldn't make this list unless there's, there's clearly a violation of, of ordinance and the resident says, I really don't care, I'm gonna go ahead with it anyway. Because most people, if you go out there and say, here's our ordinance and this is non-compliant with our ordinance, most people are gonna say, I can take care of that. You know, now if you have an abandoned house and nobody's been there for years, yeah, nobody's gonna do that. But if you have most property owners saying, I didn't realize that was a problem, I didn't realize, again, a lot of people move out here from cities where they didn't, they moved out here to have freedom and they didn't realize you can't have entire freedom if it impinges on your neighbor's use of their land. But that's something the city council has to decide, are we going to let people live out here as freely as possible as long as, you know, they're not shooting guns off within their, you know, their neighbor's space? As long as they're not doing something that's violating the neighbor's use of their land? And we talked about this one we assessed tonight, when he put up the building in the back to store the stuff so his kids could ride dirt bikes outside the neighbor's windows. You know, 'cause I don't live there, I just want to send the kids out there, it's a good place to go drive around gravel pit. Well, that's why he put an ordinance in there saying, you can't do that. Because that's impinging on the other people's right to sleep or enjoy their backyard. So I think that our decisions in the past have been that. You can take a look at what we assessed tonight, was pretty egregious. These are things that, that have grown to a point. Now, I don't agree they should take five or 11 or 20 years to resolve.
Right.
I think we need to do a much better job on, on getting them closed out, so we don't have a 24-item list. But I also think that we should be minimizing this through education and cooperation and collaboration and not go out there hunting for things. I also don't think that, that one item should open up all the property to anything else that's in the ordinance book. If somebody's complaining about dirt bikes, I don't think you should go out there and say, by the way, what other junk might you have on your land?
Yeah, and I, I agree with you and it's like, I, I struggle with the, I struggle with the complaint base because it literally depends on the attitude and the person that you get to live next to that you didn't choose to live next to. Because we have a super inconsistent where we have new housing developments, it's fairly clear that that's, you know, there's ordinances that went in place when they were built and we have some of our older homes and some of the stuff that has been here for a while, we lack, we really lack consistency from one site to the next. So it is literally, how good or not well do you get along with your neighbor and, you know, what is his perception? And it's like, I totally understand when it's egregious, I, we get into the, when you get into the nuances of, well, you can only have one boat, not three, and, and I understand it's like, well, why do we need three o boats so we can have that debate? But that's, I mean, that's what I think people struggle with. It's like, all of a sudden they get this letter from Liz and it shouldn't be Liz is the bad guy because we're directing her to do this. And they drive around and see 30 other violations that are worse than the one that they just got, but yet they're getting the citation. And I mean, she's, I'm sure she gets that in spades.
Mr. Mayor, I think...
Ms. Member Blake.
I think there's a difference between a witch hunt, going and trying to find a problem with everybody's property and blatant, in front of you, just huge amounts of, of stuff that's just sitting there that's made a big mess of the property. I think that's a huge difference for, for Liz to see that and say, you know, talk to the people and say, you know what, I think you, you need to start cleaning some of this up. Then going up to someone's house that has two boats and say, you have to get rid of one of them, that's, I don't think, I think there's, there's a big difference between huge amounts of junk sitting in people's yards and maybe the, how all of us live. I mean, none of us have pristine places, we all have things, we live out here, so we all have things. You know, we have tractors or we have lawnmowers, whatever, and we store them and sometimes they're left out or whatever. She, she wouldn't be looking for that, but if you drive by someplace and there's 30 things sitting in the front yard, you've gotta ask yourself, why can't we go up and talk to them and ask them if they would please clean that up?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Rayburn.
So in order to move the needle a little more stringent in that direction, what we could do is direct Stockman, Planner Stockman to, if she sees some of these areas that seem to be out of the ordnancy, to make a document like this and say, these are some of the areas that we think should be addressed by council. If, if we need to move, move the needle in a direction. If we move the needle all the way and we say, all violations, all codes should be reported to us, I think that's too far. If we move the needle all the way to the other direction and we say, let's just give a pass to everyone, that's not good enough. So, I like where the needle is now. I like the mayor's opinions on how we've been doing anything and we give them plenty of steps when someone's in violation. They get step after step after step. You're given chance after chance after chance. We're being very nice to them. So if we wanted to move the needle in that direction, we could say to Liz, if you do see some egregious violations, report it to the council, we'll take a look at it and we'll decide as a council, should we send out a letter?
But then we're moving away from a complaint-based system.
Yeah, that's true.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Rayburn.
I, I will go on record, I will never support giving one person the authority to go out and look for complaint, look for items. I like that it is a complaint-based operation. We need to tighten that up, figure out how we're gonna deal with them. You know, we try to do the gentler, kinder way of, of doing it. And, and I think we need to stay with that, but if that gentler, kinder, kindier, kinder way doesn't work, then you need to start saying, this is what you gotta do. But I will never support giving, and I don't mean this to be Ms. Stockman, but I will never support giving one person the authority to go out and look at every property in now then to say, I don't like this, I don't like this, I don't like this.
That isn't what we're saying, Mary. You're taking it to the extreme.
One person at a time.
Yeah. I, I will not support that. We used to have a, an anonymous complaint process and we found we were getting inundated with things without anybody to go back to to say, what did you see, when did you see it? I put forward an RCA that we at least had to have a name on a complaint.
We literally got complaints from people that didn't live in the city.
Yeah. So, again, I will not vote to give one person the authority to...
So, so, you know, back, back to that point, yeah, if we're gonna err on the side, I'm, I'm gonna err on the side of, let's be complaint-driven. I'm not gonna back off on that either. I think that, that one of the problems is, no matter, you give that direction to any one person, it's going to be subjective. Because the person with five acres and some stuff is gonna be a lot more obvious than the person with 40 acres with more stuff than that. And quite frankly, without the complaint, the 90 cars, you can't see from the road typically. But people get to see aerial photos. People see aerial photos of your property and, oh, they got a lot of stuff. So subjectively, is it only if you can see it from the road? Can you see it from an aerial? And, and our problem is, we right now have our code enforcement officer is also our Planner. So she has reason to go on property all the time if you're doing any additions. So let's say you want to put an addition or put a shed up or something, so we invite out our Planner and who's also the code enforcement and says, oh, look at the crap you got behind your house. That's a violation. Now, your neighbors may never see it, your neighbors may never notice it. But now it's a violation that just adds to this list. And I think that, that again, let's all grow up and if it bothers us, say something to our neighbor first and foremost, go talk to your neighbor. And, and if we can't do that, I mean, we're trying to build a community here. Or say, you know what, it really doesn't bother me that much. If it's not a health and safety, it's not attracting vermin, it's not, you know, it's not blocking waterways, it's, you know, what, what is it actually causing? And then I think it's important that when the complaints come in, do we realize this is a dispute between two neighbors over a property line? Or over the loud music they're playing or something? Well, we have a nuisance ordinance, but at some point, you're now into a situation where you've gotta go to a court of law. You guys go get lawyers and do this because the city's not gonna arbitrate your personal dispute. You can see the things we took action on tonight were not personal disputes. These are, are significant violations. And I think the city needs to get out of personal conflicts. If you got a problem with your neighbor that really isn't an ordinance violation, don't use the city to referee your, your fights. If you have a legal issue, get lawyers and, and do that. But better yet, have a barbecue and talk, you know? We, we, we had a, a situation here in part of the city where that's what it was, they started using the, the city against their neighbor. And I sat down with them for two hours each and literally, they ended up having barbecues together and exchanging Christmas cards. I mean, it changed the whole thing because it, it went from, there's no reason to be hating on each other, there was just a misunderstanding. And once they figured that out and started working together on the issues they had, they quit complaining to the city and they actually got along pretty well. And they still do to this day. And so I think that's what we should encourage first and foremost. Now, if we're not getting that, then we have a series of letters. And so back to that, I would like to suggest to the council or recommend to the council that we take this Section 5 Administrative Enforcement and clean it up. First of all, include all the definitions that are referenced in here in the definition so people can see it. To put it in language that anybody can look at it and say, I understand the spirit of this. I think we have violations, we, you know, again, I'm, I'm one that tends towards, let's avoid things that immediately go negative, you know, accused, suspected, you know, there's a, there's a potential compliance issue. Let's start out with, that's, we're just trying to find out, is there a compliance issue? And here's the specific thing we think it might be. And look for that, have that discussion and not broaden it out to be a bunch of other things.
Mr. Mayor.
Planner Stockman.
May I just clarify a couple things?
Well, by, by the way, before you say that, I don't know, anybody's complained about two or three boats, just so that was an example that was used, but I have never seen a complaint about too many boats that I know of. Sometimes our examples get used out there and, and the next thing I hear is, the council's gonna keep you from having boats. That's not what we're saying. There are ordinances, but having three boats isn't necessarily what anybody's been complaining about. Am I correct?
Three recreational vehicles, a trailer, two boats, three boats, two trailers and a camper.
Outdoors. You can put as many as you want, you can fit in.
Yes, as many as you want inside.
You can do it in your buildings, whatever you want, as long as it's not gonna blow up or pollute the neighbor's well. But, but just wait, if you wanna store 16 boats in your shed and you got room, it's none of our business, right?
Correct.
Okay, so you, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
Just wanted to clarify about definitions. Remember too, that this is part of our zoning city code, you know, so there's a whole section of definitions that apply to this that are in the front of the code. And yes, some of these are more specific to the section and we certainly can tweak it.
And that's, that's what I'm saying, you know, we've, we've got administrative notice, there's no definition, potential code, non-compliance, you know, we, we have letters that we're sending out that aren't referenced in here. So it's kinda like we, we added things, but we didn't go back and update the ordinance when we changed the letters, it appears.
Yes, we did. We updated this...
Okay, some of those aren't in here then as far as definitions.
Yep, so we updated this in 2018 and we went through it with a fine-tooth comb at that time, not, you know, that doesn't stop you from amending it again. I think...
And there's, there's some things in there that I would, I would like to clarify because right now, we have, let's see...
Could I finish?
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. First of all... First of all, the ordinance and what I see is not a matter of like. It's a matter of what has been adopted by the city council that is in writing in our city code. So, I'm not just driving around or whoever can't drive around and just look for things, right? That's not, I mean, I see a lot, yes. But I go by your direction and, yeah, if you want to make it more strict or less strict, that's completely up to you. But there's basically three options for code enforcement. You do nothing. And why have regulations if you're going to do nothing? Because we will get complaints and we have to be able to tell the residents something or act somehow. But yeah, it's either nothing or the complaint process or the proactive way, which has been indicated by some members that they're not in favor of. I do have somewhat of a problem with going to one site that may have gotten a complaint and the neighbor next door might have the very same violation. And, I mean, that's kind of frustrating and for them to be sent a letter where the neighbor didn't get a letter, so that's something to think about. But I think we could tweak our ordinance too, to address things like this, like farms, for instance. The way it's commonly treated in other cities is that farm equipment and anything associated with the farm is fair game for outdoor storage. If you have cars sitting out there and boats and whatever else, you're still subject to the RRA residential outdoor storage requirements. So, you know, farm is great and trucks and trailers and tractors and whatever they need for the operation. But, you know, we can define that a little more clearly. Secondly, what would help in a lot of situations is just what you said. Like, when you can't see it from the road, it's not as offensive unless possibly it's, you know, somebody's got a bunch of stuff backing up to another neighbor. But everything has to be five feet from the lot line, no matter what it is, a vehicle or any other storage. But you could also have setback requirements that may correlate to like accessory building setbacks where you have, you can store things that are further back from the road or possibly sides and rear. Otherwise, you provide some sort of screening for it. Just ideas. But yeah, definitely, this is not a subjective process. So, whatever you want to do, we need to define in writing.
And that, that's my point in, in having staff look at this. It's not, it shouldn't be subjective. And I think it is very, be very clear, if you're going to put in screening, if you're going to put in, gee, you're lucky you've got a lot where you can put stuff that other people don't see it, you happen to live on a busier road and people see it. Or your neighbor can see it, but the people from the front of the property can't see it. Or, gee, I happened to see this when I was looking at aerials of your neighbors and, you know? We just, we want to make sure that the people understand that the city's not interested in going on a witch hunt or a violation hunt. And so, however we put that in here, it should be very clear that somebody goes, goes to the ordinance and says, that's clear, clearly understood to me, why that person gets that. You know, if you're going to have farm equipment, do you have to have a farm? Everybody's got here's got five acres, you know? You're going to have two and a half acres in a residential area that's divided up. Like, typically, you're going to have five or more. So, the guy with all the tractors and the trailers, how much land does that person have to have compared to the person with the tractors and trailers? But he's farming somebody else's property. We have a lot of people out here that lease property, but they're keeping the equipment at home, but they're, they're using it on other people's property. If we can't clearly define that, we can't clearly enforce that. And so, what we need to do is make sure first and foremost, this is clear. We have something called Administrative Citation Program brochure, which probably exists, but I don't know where. I don't know if people actually get this when, if it, if a complaint comes in. I, I think that the, the one that got me was the code compliance officer. Any officer of the Inoka County Sheriff's Department, any officer of the Inoka County Sheriff's Department, the city clerk, the building official, the zoning administrator, are all compliant, code compliance officers. What training do they have to do this? Do we have, everybody on the Inoka County Sheriff's Department has read this ordinance and, and knows how to enforce it or to? So, I think there's, there's cleanup that needs to be done. And if we wanted to clarify, you know, what can be on property and what can't, then let's get it in here because as an ordinance, we have to have a public hearing saying, we're going to change this. And we can bring it out to the resident saying, is this clear? Does it make sense? And is this how you want to live in now then? We, we worked really hard on a comp plan that says, people want to still live in the country. We fought hard to get the Met Council, an exemption from Met Council because we didn't want enforcement that was being done in other cities to be happening out here. People moved out here and live out here with that in mind. So, we want to make sure that our ordinances reflect that. Again, understanding how they impact the neighbors. So, what is the reasonable setback? If you're going to have hay wagons, is five feet a reasonable setback? If we want to do something different so we're not imposing on other people's use of their land, then let's make it clear and let's put it in the ordinance and put it before the residents so they can all see that. But right now, there's, there's lack of clarity. And I think that we're, we're majoring on some minor things, maybe because of disputes between neighbors, maybe because somebody got a burr under their saddle as they were driving by and decided they should call this in. Again, without a complaint process where we understand that, and we can talk to the complainant and the person they're complaining about, I think a lot of these things could be cleared up fairly quickly. We don't have to have a months-long process to get, to get resolution. So, I, I'm also recommending to council that we have staff look at this and clear, clean up the ordinance with the idea that it's part of a, a, a larger ordinance. And where the definitions maybe overlap, make sure that's clear. But I think, as I said, as I was going through this, there's just some that are specifically to this administrative enforcement that I didn't see in there. But we certainly can have that looked at by staff. If there are improvements, clarifications, let's get that in there and put it before the residents. So, the residents can say, that makes perfect sense to me. That's clearly understood and I understand the process. I would also say while we're doing that, going back to my, my comment earlier, the next item on our list, the CUPs and IUPs, that's what we really asked. We have a, you know, Liz is in a dual role. She's the planner and she's the code enforcement officer. And so, she has to decide how that time is being used and, and obviously now we have an administrator, Scott has to weigh in on that too. What are the priorities that the council wants to direct staff to do? And I think this, the CUP, IUP has been open way too long and we could probably get that reduced and closed down relatively quickly. If there's not other things burning down on this. So, I would like to have the council agree that as complaints come in, first of all, we have a complaint process. There is a form that people fill out. I would like those to go to the administrator and the administrator to then say, where do I need help from a technical standpoint? Is this a legal matter? Is this a, a code issue? Is this an engineering issue? And have Scott then call on the services of other individuals. And I think that there's some of these things come in that, in my opinion, Scott could make a few phone calls and, and clarify and resolve them before they become expensive, time-consuming or an irritant. So, on the one hand, let's clean up the document and make sure that it's as educational as possible with the steps. If you don't listen to the education, if you don't cooperate in cleaning things up, we have remedial steps that we can do. The city always has the hammer of the law. Let's avoid using it wherever possible. And so, with that said, how many things did we clean up that never make this list because we got things resolved quickly and without animosity, without exacerbating this any further than we have to? So, I would like to move that we have the staff clean this up and that they would be able to use Planner Stockman and council input because some of us have been around looking at these documents for a long time. We've dealt with city residents, so I, I want to make sure that the staff is available to call on all of our contracted personnel and anybody on the council that can weigh in on the matter. And then I would also recommend that future viol, complaints be funneled to Scott and Scott decide how to deal with those. With the intention of remediate them as quickly as possible or call in professionals for consultation if, if there's code issues or law, legal issues or engineering issues that need to be resolved.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray.
Where have the complaints gone before?
Typically, they go right to Liz.
And so, we're adding more on to Scott's responsibilities. But Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray.
Motion on the floor. I would second that motion for discussion.
Okay. They have a motion and a second. Planner Stockman.
No, the city clerk in the past has, has definitely funneled those through. If it's a, you know, a road complaint, it goes to Joe and Eric. If it's a, you know...
And I'm, and I'm saying I'd like those all to go to Scott because I'd like Scott to know because residents still call me with road complaints. And then I have to refer it to Scott and he doesn't know about it. I'd like Scott to know about that because Scott's responsible for staff. And if there's a road issue, I'm expecting Scott to go drive to the road and then talk to staff.
Right, so...
You know, I mean, so, so I, I think that, that while there has been some inconsistency within the past, I would just like to make it clear from a council standpoint that complaints go to the administrator to send to the appropriate. So, if he deals with Public Works, if it's a park or a road issue, he sits down with his staff and says, let's take care of this. Or it's really not, you know, that's exactly how we want that road to be and get back to the resident and tell them that.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
Planner Stockman.
Just a follow-up question then. Do you, in the past, I noticed in the city's files that there's been like a log of complaints that weren't zoning complaints because I'm just dealing with mostly the zoning stuff. I'm just, I don't know what happens when someone calls in versus somebody, you know, in what situation, I guess, do you want a written complaint versus a call-in complaint? Because I think you do get a lot of call-in complaints. So, where do you draw the line, I guess, is what I'm asking so that we aren't, so that we don't mess up on our end.
Mr. Mayor, may I answer that one?
Yes.
Because I'm there answering the phones. A lot of times what Adrian will do is, if someone is calling about a complaint, she directs them to the website so that there's a complaint form there. And I'm sorry that City doesn't do anything with verbal and you have to fill that out. Now, I know that's just since Mr. Boils was here. I don't know what happened previously, but that is how we've been handling them.
Oh, good.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Rainville.
I think it's important to have that trail, especially so like with roads. If we're getting jacked, we don't have a Jackson Street, but a Jackson Street, and we're getting continuous complaints on that for whatever reason, then Scott is aware of that, can talk with Public Works. What do we need to look at next year in the budget? Maybe to do something on Jackson Street so we can eliminate those issues.
That's good.
But without that complaint form and a log and somebody specific looking at it and directing it to the correct person, we don't know anything.
Right, and as I always ask, you're right.
Yeah. And, and what people need to understand is, you can make a complaint, but state statute allows you to be anonymous. We, the, the staff has to have a name and an address and a number, but that information is anonymous based on state statute, not a city decision, a state statute. And so, there is some anonymity for people that they, they can make a complaint and not, hopefully not, I mean, their neighbors are going to know it's the neighbor, but, you know, they, but they have to give a name, but that is not public.
Correct.
Other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, Jason, were you supposed to say something?
I, go ahead, I'll get...
Okay. And I just would, along with the staff looking at this, is that if we have any suggestions that we forward them to Scott.
Councilmember Oles, were you going to say something?
Yes, I, I really like the direction on if we continue with the complaint-based and we log what the complaint is. I like, I mean, just, I don't think we need to go out there and it's free rein of any ordinance that's there. It's like, the complaint was the fictitious three boats. Let's keep it to the three boats and not worry about the, not worry that the fence is too high or something like that. And it's like, I, I like that approach so that somebody knows, okay, this is what, and we should be nervous if we have, if the complaint has got fifty-two ordinances that are dialed out in the complaint that it's, you know, there's something in the water there because that seems odd.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Rainville.
I would say, so also with the complaint form is that, I think our complaint form is pretty generic. And maybe we ask the residents to be a little more specific and maybe not thirteen pages of it. But what specifically did you see there? When did you see it? If it's a semi parked in somebody's yard that it shouldn't be there, you know, when do you see it? Do they leave at this time? Do they come back at this time? So that if we are going to do any investigation on it, we have a timeframe that would, I mean, you call the sheriff's office and you say, they're speeding down my road. Well, what time? Because I'm not going to sit there twenty-four seven. You know? Is it noon? Is it three? Is it five P.M.? You know, some specifics in the complaint form, which will help Scott then deal with, if, if there is a, if it truly is a complaint, if it isn't a complaint, then you deal with it that way.
That's exactly right. We had a, a complaint come in a couple of years ago and they, they were saying these people are racing down the road every day. And again, we didn't have sheriff's coverage as much as we did now, but it's like, can you help us out a little bit?
Yeah.
Right.
So, we, we went and formalized the complaint. They said, well, actually, it's every day when the kids get off the school bus. It's this car, it's, you know? They were very specific once that, and, and once the sheriff found out, it's when kids are getting off the school bus and they're running through the stop sign. You know, that heightened everything. But if just a general, somebody races up and down the street, it is very helpful to have the specifics. It also avoids, my neighbors have stuff. Everybody's got stuff.
Everybody has stuff.
What stuff are we talking about?
A bunch of stuff out there.
I get my... My stuff has way too much stuff. Mine's there's too much stuff too.
Not according to the storage units people.
Yeah.
Then there's not enough. But, but to the point, you know, I think that that one complaint that came in, it wasn't thirteen pages. But they were very thorough in saying, here's what your ordinances say. I wouldn't expect that residents are going to go through and say that. But if we have ordinances that are available online, they certainly could. I also think that with the intention of being educational, if staff is seeing things, you know, Public Works gets around all the streets in town all the time. Planner gets out to buildings for other reasons. If they're seeing things, I think educationally, what you do is you make sure it's in the newsletter. You make sure it's up on the website. By the way, just so you know, here's the limit on recreational vehicles. And so that, you know, people can say, oh, gosh, I, I got six recreational vehicles. Maybe I should put some of those in the shed. You know, what can we do? So, people can help self-police. And then if they don't, then you can go over and, and talk to your neighbor or, or not. But I think is, if we can be more educational through our newsletter, through our website and say, just, people are, we, we're very intentional with the snowplow. Two years in a row, we've made sure in our fall newsletter that the, the great piece of work that Joel created, you know, it was very clear, here's how you do it, here's how you don't do it. You know, so now people have opportunities to see it. It's on the website, I assume. I know it's been in the newsletters and it's very clear. Now, we're educational. Before that happened, we literally were, the office staff was sending sheriffs out with citations saying, here's a $200 fine, and they didn't know what hit them. Well, now it's, it's going to be harder to not know that. But let's not surprise people. And then understand when people move out here, they, you know, they need to know where to look for things. All right, any other discussion on that? We have a motion and a second. And so, again, to clarify that is to, to bring the Section Five Administrative Enforcement up to date and, and, and obviously with the intention of the larger section that it's part of, to be consistent and compliant. As a second, Councilmember Rainville, will you agree to that? And then, then the complaints being on the form, as staff has, has said, is being done. And those complaints would be funneled through from Administrator Lehner and goes out to the proper authorities. And those complaints would be funneled through from Administrator Laner and go out to the proper authorities. So you can track it, and you can make sure the right people are getting the information. And then as appropriate, you can give the council updates on the types of complaints we're seeing. So there is, the council can be made aware of what's going on. So when we get calls, we say, "Yeah, we know about that. Staff is on it, here's the update." With that being understood, all those in favor of that in motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now, we're going to go on to CUPs and IUPs, but I know there's some people in the audience that aren't really interested in the CUPs and IUPs and may or may not want to stick around for all of it. But I did want to, while the council was here, and you've heard our discussion, is there something you would like to comment on? I'm going to open up the floor. I'd like to keep it to three minutes. But if people have a comment, did we, is there something that as a council we missed? Is there something that we need to follow up on further? Or does it appear from your concerns that brought you here tonight, we've covered sufficiently at this point the, the concerns you have? And if you'd like to, obviously, we need a microphone there, Scott? You want to grab Liz's microphone there, please? And please identify yourself and your address.
Thank you. Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. My name is Samuel Corns.
Sam, could you wait just a second till Councilmember Ray comes back to you?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Ray, I'd ask those that are sitting here that might be interested in what we just discussed to at least have a chance to say something, so... I'm sorry, go ahead.
My name is Samuel Corns, I live on 19223 Burns Parkway in Now Then here. I won't take too much time, and I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but the main reason, and I really appreciate you putting this meeting on, Mr. Mayor, because I initially, when I came to the city council meeting as a floor item, I came to the city council seeking some sort of clarification on a code violation letter that I received. You know, and, and there was a lot of disconnect, mainly between myself and Liz Stockman, between what the actual complaint was, what, what the city meant by the complaint, and what the process was. And there was no clarification. All that, all that happened was it got handed down to Mr. Laner's hands after a week of him being here. And then I was forced to have them come out to my house and walk around the property and lift up every single stone and take a look and make sure I don't have any violations out there. Because as a, from the city standpoint, you guys, you guys have, you guys have everything in your back pocket in terms of if we don't comply with you, you're, we're going to get the lawyer involved, and now you're going to pay thousands of dollars of fines. And when you deal with Liz Stockman, it's incredibly difficult. And I'm so thankful that Scott Laner is here to, to talk, to talk people through this. But I'm not surprised one bit that you're sending letters out that nobody's responding to. A couple of questions that I have. Has anybody ever asked if the people, the property, that, that all these issues that you're having with these properties, has anybody asked if they need help cleaning it up? Uh, as a, as a fellow resident, I, I had no idea that we're having so many problems with abandoned houses. Maybe, maybe they got a mental illness, maybe they got a hoarding disorder, you know, and, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't be discouraged from going over there and giving them a hand if they, if, if that's what they need. And it seems like it's, it's becoming to be more punitive than assisting people that might actually need some help.
Can I, can I just?
Sure.
Just stop you there. We, we do try to pay attention to that. This particular property owner has lots of property, and, and it's not, you know, first thing we do is we, we care for the welfare of the residents. We have both volunteered as a city, city staff and council members, where there are other people that are more in need. They have, for whatever reason, a family member that hoarded a lot of stuff. And so we don't make a big deal out of that because, you know, a lot of people don't want to be known for that.
Absolutely.
But the city staff has, has worked very hard, and, and the council has volunteered time to actually remediate some of these things and come alongside people. It's also the reason that, that, you know, twice a year, we have the freebies in the, in the recycling so that family and friends can help out people that have maybe got too much stuff, and we can, the city helps cover those costs to get it, get it done. So just to clarify, that's one of the first things we do, that, that cases when it's gotten this far, it's...
You, you mentioned that city staff has gotten involved, but by city staff, are you only referring to Liz? Or has anybody else reached out to these people?
No, we, we have times where we have Public Works.
Um, I don't know if any of the council members have actually received a letter from the city about a city code violation. Here's mine. Here's my letter, and that's why I was seeking clarification on it. Because the complaint that I got on my property was I had items stored on my property. That was the complaint. You got items stored on your property. And if you look at that complaint, and you look at the stuff that's listed there, you have to scratch your head and go, "Oh, my God, what are these people thinking? What, where's the disconnect happening?" And when you reach out to Liz and you go back and forth with her, her stance is, her stance was such that there's items that you can, cannot have stored on your property. But there's no specific items that we're talking about. So there is a monster disconnect, and we were just butting heads the entire time. To eventually, to where the, the attorney called me up and he said, and I, and I told him, I said, "I'm forced to, I'm forced to, to let you guys come out here." And he said, "Yeah, you're forced to, or we'll just get a warrant." So that's from your city attorney talking to a resident who only wants clarification, mind you. That's, that's just from my perspective. We talk about a... I wrote down a bunch of things, I'm just trying to navigate through it here. Uh, enforcement in other cities, not like it is here. It, it seems to me like there's a lot of stuff that's being enforced here in the city of Now Then that I'm not going to say doesn't necessarily need to be, but I know there's been a lot of discussion tonight on whether or not there's some sort of discretion in terms of different properties and what's being met, and different, different neighbors just not getting along. And I understand a lot of that. But three recreational vehicles, for example, in the city of Now Then, you can only have three trailers, a Skidster trailer, a snowmobile trailer, and a camper. I can't put my boat outside now because that's four, and now I'm out of violation. You know, and if you got five, seven acres, come on. But I think there's, there's some, there's some gray area there, but mainly, the, the point that I wanted to beat down was if there's anybody, like, I requested, when, when I started dealing with this, and I had to deal with Liz, I requested, "Can I deal with anybody else? Can I deal with Mr. Boils? Can I deal with somebody else? Anybody else wants to come up to my property, please, feel free?" And I had no idea how incredibly difficult Liz was to deal with until I started talking to residents, and I still have yet to find one who's had one positive association or impact with Liz in a professional setting. And I think that's, as a resident, I find that, you know, rather, I'm not going to say offensive, but it's, it's terrible. It's terrible when she's the, she's the go-to person, and she's not approachable. You can't have a solid conversation with her. She won't understand where you're coming from, and she's just overall condescending. So of course, you're going to meet a lot of pushback, and you're going to get a lot of, you're, you're going to butt heads nonstop with, with, with her as a person.
So Sam, can I, because I, we're going to try and keep this short.
Sure.
You're not a fan of Liz?
I am not.
Right?
I never said that.
Now...
Whole words in my mouth, I never said that.
No, no, no. I'm saying he's not a fan of you.
Oh, correct.
All right? And, and so that being understood, you know, and, and, and obviously, you have made your discontent with that, known to Mr. Laner, known to the council. So what we're trying to do here is, is move forward in a positive way.
Sure.
So whatever your experiences were, what we're trying to do tonight is say, what we resolved here tonight should remediate that, should take care of letters like this where obviously this has continued to be an irritant. But we're trying to make sure those letters don't go out educationally with the lawyer's name on.
Sure.
You know, with, with those type of things. So, so we're, our attempt here tonight by cleaning up our process and looking at the letters that go out, and who they go out from, and how do we do that? I think our intention was to remediate a lot of your frustration over the last three months.
But without being able to have a conversation with the council to bring it to their attention. Were you, were, were any of the council members aware of a lot of the frustrations any residents have been having with Liz? I'm sure you might have heard some things here and there, down the road, passing by, talking to people, but, but in a professional setting, has anybody actually told you that they have a difficult time working with Liz in a professional setting? I'm not sure if anybody has, and I'm not sure it's been brought to your attention. But all I really wanted when I came to that city council meeting on the floor item was just to have a conversation, because a lot of the stuff can get fixed over a conversation. Mr. Mayor, we've had some great conversations, and I really appreciate them. And a lot of the stuff can get resolved over a conversation. Have a cup of coffee with the residents. Oh, my gosh, we're, we're a city of 4,400 people. It's not, it's not the end of the world. But unless it gets brought up...
We're not all coffee drinkers.
Well...
Sam, I think what we're trying to do here is we're not trying to go hard on the person, we're trying to go hard on the process, so...
Sure.
You get super frustrated because we thought the process lacks clarity, and again, I mean, I understand you're frustrated with Liz, I get that, but I don't really want to have this be a Liz attack. It's like, the process drove a ton of frustration on your part. Liz thought she was doing what the, what the city council was asking her to do. I mean, Liz is employed by us as a city council, so we are trying to clean up the process. So for the last hour and a half, that was the, the discussion. The feedback that we would like to get is, based on the last hour and a half, do you believe that that is going to be better for the next guy that has whatever it was on your property, so that we can get better clarity and drive a better process? So we don't get into a personal attack on, "I don't like Liz," or "Liz doesn't like you," or whatever the heck the situation is?
If you clean up the process, like you said, that was just discussed in the last hour and a half, if you clean up the process and you have somebody else present it other than Liz, absolutely. I think there should be no problems from here on out.
So going forward, we're going to clean up the process, and we are asking Scott to be the point of contact.
That should be, honestly, that should, that should help out significantly. It really should.
We're trying to get Liz to, "Hey, here's the code. If Scott needs some help with the code, or if we need to refer to one of our other team members that helped, it's going to flow through Scott." So we're trying to get to, "It was very unfortunate for you, I understand you're frustrated, you still are." And when I read this, this is, this would make me like tense too, right? So we're trying to be better at the process, and we're trying to be better from who's the point of contact, and where should that go?
Sure. Well, that's really it. I mean, I really appreciate the time, and I appreciate the ability to talk to you.
Cool.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ray.
This, this process here is no different than the process we used when we did, um, started working on the checklist for a building permits and things like that. It's the same process.
Let's go.
And I know, Mr., Sam and I have had many conversations also, and he gets frustrated, the government moves slowly. It does. And it does because we need to make sure we're doing it correctly. And that you talk to us at the open floor items. That open floor items is not a time for us to have a conversation. It's to get input from residents on an issue, and then council then directs that back. And I had told you that, told you that, that we don't have...
Absolutely, but if, and I don't mean to interrupt you, I really apologize for that, but if, if that's the case, why wouldn't I just go direct with the administrator initially, which I did? But we have to go through the circle of, "I'll talk to Scott, hold on, you have to bring it up to the council." We'll wait a couple of weeks, we'll bring it up to the council. Okay, you direct it back to Scott. Now him and I are having the same conversation we just had a month ago.
Let me, let me address that, because you're, you're kind of in a perfect storm here. You know, this came to the attention the week Scott was hired.
Yes.
Scott was in and out, you know, with pre-planned events in, in August, so this, this dragged out. You know, in, in my opinion, you know, this, this could have been nipped in the bud a lot quicker. But be that as may, Scott's trying to learn here, you know? He's, he's got partners that are professionals he's learning from. And, you know, he's, he's treading into this. I, I think, you know, where he sits today, where he sat three months ago, it's going to be a lot different. But that being said, you've been involved with it for a month by the time Scott comes on board. You come to the meeting, we turn it over to somebody who's brand new in the job and who's in and out for the first month. So, so let's at least get over that. I, I appreciate Councilmember Alders' explanation of what we accomplished here tonight, and hopefully, as you said, if, if we follow through on what we resolved here tonight, this will be better for the next person. We can't do anything about your past three months at this point, other than to make sure it doesn't happen again.
Absolutely, and I really appreciate that.
And that whoever represents us, whether it's Planner Stockman in whatever role she has with us, or an engineer, or a attorney, that our job is to make sure they are as professional and as well-prepared with, with facts and details as possible. And that's why, one of the reasons we, we put the responsibility on Scott. He reports directly to the council, and so he's going to make sure that the team he's built around him and that we've given him all work together with the residents best in mind. And, and the professional customer service. And if we've missed the mark on that, you know, again, there are, are ways of doing things. If our documents don't clearly define how the council wants to be represented, and the staff goes by what we put in our documents, that's, that's on the council. We need to make sure that we're giving them the right information, and then making sure it's being communicated accurately as well. And I think we've gone a long way towards that tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
And thank you for your time and your attention, so...
Mr. Corns, do you want to speak?
And, and, and I would say for anybody who, any audience are listening, we will be directing things through Administrator Laner. But there's a reason we put all of our contact information in the newsletter and on the website. You know, we are the elected officials. If you've got a concern, if you've got something that, you know, I assume that that document you've seen there was seen by everybody on the council. If there's any question, feel free to contact the council. You, you know that when you've tried to contact me, I have been available, whether it's text, or phone call, or email. The council is available for that, to make sure that we're working hand in glove with, with the administrator as well. So because we're directing things through Scott, we want to make sure there's a central focus there, so he's, he's aware of everything we're aware of. But that doesn't mean that the council is, is off limits. We're, we're the elected officials, and our contact information is there, so you can get ahold of us. And so if somebody does have a problem or a question or concern, it's a lot better to contact us directly than go through Facebook or talk it over at the bar. I mean, let us know what's going on, and we can help get it resolved. Pretty much what I've been finding when residents have called me lately, and I forward it to, to the administrator, he already knows about it, and he's doing something. So that's, that's very encouraging to me, that we're working as a team, so, but we are available and interested, so...
I'm Rob Kohler, 19147 Baugh Street. I'm a fifth generation on a family farm. And we've, we've been residents of Burnstown Township since 1876. And I just want to tap off kind of what he said, and kind of what you kind of came back with it, is it's not an attack on Liz, but I found nothing but extreme difficulty working with her. And I just wanted to kind of make that point. And that's our source of contact information, and she's nothing but rude and condescending. It's very difficult for us to deal with that.
What project did we work on together?
Built a shed three years ago.
The shed on Baugh Street?
Yep. It was owned agricultural. And it was for agricultural purposes. Went through the whole rigmarole, and come to find out I didn't need to pull a permit, or any of that, because of agricultural use. Huh?
Was it the one regarding the egg exemption issue, or what?
Yeah, which was never pointed out to me. He told me I needed to pull a permit, knew all that stuff, which I went through that whole rigmarole, and then I find out I don't need to. And I recall being threatened by you that you're going to come out and inspect my shed and find... and fine me, and charge me the back permit fees if you find one personal piece of my property in that shed.
No, that's what the ag exemption states. When you sign an ag exemption, it can only be used for agricultural purposes. That is in the ordinance and in the state statute.
But, we went round and round multiple times on the phone.
You did, maybe so.
And if you would inform me of that as an option, we would have never had a problem. But the fact that you told me I needed to pull a permit, do all that different stuff, which I, was never necessary.
Well, I have to check people too, depending, you said you were going to store things in that building when you were moving properties.
Yeah, because I was moving, I had to put some stuff in there.
So that's not agricultural product, and that's not agricultural equipment. So I'm just saying, this, I'm not making this stuff up. Again, this is not subjective. It's not because I don't like you, or like what you want to do. I have to look back at the ordinance to see what it allows and what it doesn't allow.
But it's a tractor, it's a mechanic shop for tractors.
Well, how, like I said, you told me something different, so I have to go by what you say. I'm not guessing what's in there, right? Like, like-
Well, you're very extremely difficult to work with, and I think that's an issue.
Thank you. Anybody else regarding the, um, code enforcement process we just discussed that we are going to address?
I guess I don't know about code enforcement, but, um, Mike Breedy, 18953 Jasper Street. And when I, when I moved out here to Now Then, I bought a ten acre piece of property and I was going through the process of what I'm able to build on my property, where I can build it, how big I can build it, how many I can build. And I went through the process with Liz as well of, before I bought the property, all these lists of questions of where can I build it, how big can I build it, how many can I build, what are the setbacks? And I was given an email of these criteria, and it, it seemed to have been flow and change as the process got further down the road, and I'm still not a hundred percent clear on what I am and what I'm not able to do on my ten acre piece of property. Um, I was originally told of a hundred and twenty foot setback from all three roads and ten feet from a common lot line, and at the end of the day, I ended up putting a pole barn where I wasn't expecting to put it after investing a bunch of money into buying a property, under the expectation I had, where I could put these buildings, and how many I could have, and what size I can have, and at the eleventh hour I get, and I'm, I'm not saying this is Liz's problem, but as a council, I think there needs to be, if you go back to cleaning up some of these ordinances and, and processes of, you know, I think my property is a little bit site-specific, because I bordered by three roads and not one or two, um, but to move out here with the expectation of I can build what I want within these limitations, and then after the, I go through the process of getting my house surveyed and find out that I, a third of my property is now, I can't do what I want with it because of a setback dictating on what is considered my front yard. And I know Mayor, you may or may not remember that, but you stopped up-
I remember very well.
You know, um, you know, and it was like, well, you have to put it back here, which is, just doesn't make any sense as far as utilities and a driveway, and then it was, well, can you put it over here? And then it's like, well, that doesn't make any sense, but all these, there was just a lot of muddy waters on where I can put this, and it didn't really seem to follow any type of ordinance or code. And ultimately, I ended up putting the, the pole barn three hundred feet off of Jasper, which I'm not necessarily sure I had to do that, you know, that wasn't my ideal spot, but I think just as a city, I, I don't, it's still like clarification on what I can and can't do on my property as far as a third of it technically being labeled unusable as far as building what I want there. Um, and I don't know if that's a council issue, if that's a, you know, Liz stopping back out and giving me a little bit more clarification, but I think just, I don't know, that's-
To, to the point, you know, I did spend a lot of time with you out there, and we, we went through a lot of different options with the existing barn, and, uh, it was unusual, if you're familiar with Mr. Breedy's property there, he is bordered by one hundred and ninetieth, one hundred and eighty-ninth, and Jasper, so he's got three frontages. And so he's got ten acres, and it was very limiting as to the, you know, ten acres, you can have any number of buildings and any size buildings. Uh, but all of a sudden, he's limited to a property because of setbacks on all of that. So we tried to work through as, as best we could at the time. And, and in Liz's defense, you know, she's, she's bound by the statutes and ordinances that are in existence.
Well, and I guess that's my point when I asked the question.
She's very black and white.
Right, and I guess that's my point, is Liz has given me the information based on what the city ordinance is, and that was a hundred and twenty feet from all three roads. And I don't know at what point that changed to now it's three hundred feet off of Jasper, because that's technically considered my front yard, but if I'm going to Liz and she's given me the information that the city is telling her to give me, and that's a hundred and twenty feet, and then later it changes to three hundred feet, I guess that's, right, a little bit of a problem, is I bought this property with the understanding I can build something within a hundred and twenty feet of all three roads, and after investing a bunch of money into the property, now I'm being told, well, a third of it, you can't do what you want to do.
And I'm, I'm not certain how it got back to three hundred feet off the-
No, it was a hundred and twenty feet for the principal structure, so we had talked about the residence for quite some time, even before he bought it, I think, but the issue, yeah, was the accessory building, which has either behind the home, even with or behind the home, or three hundred feet back. So, that's where the issue came in, was with the accessory, accessory required setback.
Because what I was told was one hundred and eighty-ninth, and one hundred and ninetieth have more road frontage than Jasper. So, whatever road frontage has the least amount is what we're considering your front yard, which happened to be Jasper, which now I'm stuck keeping all my structures three hundred feet off of Jasper, because that's technically my front yard, which, that's, that's the city ordinance and that's the city code, but, you know, does it make sense on someone who has ten acres of property to cram everything that they want into, you know?
The pine?
The, you know, into a wedge versus being able to, because where I wanted to put the pole barn would have been the, the least obstructive to anybody who lives around me. Now, there's people on one hundred and ninetieth that got to look at it, I got to look at it outside my back window, you know, it's just, I think there's room for improvement on, or exceptions on some of this stuff without having to apply for a variance, and whether that's having Liz come out, or, I don't know what the solution is, but-
The process would be a variance, and if there's something, uh, again, otherwise you get to that subjective, you know, can Liz abide by the rules sometimes, not other times in that. So variance puts it, a public hearing, the people that are affected by it, your neighbors get to weigh in on it, saying, you know, it's not ideal.
Well, I was also told my property isn't, the, the condition isn't, doesn't mean a variance condition, so that, i- if there was another solution, I guess I wasn't told what that was, and maybe that goes along with your point of educating people of, okay, no, you can't put it here, but if you applied for a CUP, or you applied for this, here's your options, right?
And, and that's one of the things that we're trying to, again, the reason I said the council is available for that. When these, yours is a very unique situation, I don't know how many places we have with three roads like that. You're on a peninsula that is rare in our town. Um, but that's where we can, our intention is to allow people to use their property as best suited when they come out here, and not set a negative precedent. Uh, and so that's always our concern in planning and zoning is, what precedent are we setting, and can we do this for anybody else who has that same condition? Um, so anybody else in town, whatever we do for you, depending on what the variance on your property are allowed, we'd have to consider for other people. But that's where you have that discussion, you know, what is this unique piece of property, and, and how might we be able to do it? And that's where we, we ask people to, okay, I'm, I'm not satisfied with what Liz said, take it to the council, take it to the planning and zoning, what else can be done? Um, because again, Liz is, is told, here's the rules. Um, I don't know where we ended up with the three hundred feet, because I thought when we talked about it, it was going to be even with the house, so we weren't looking at the backyard into it. I thought it was going to be closer to Jasper, and basically to the side of your house where you're not going to see it. So I don't know what happened after that, how it ended up being pushed back further.
I think it comes back to road frontage, was Jasper has the least amount of road frontage, and whatever is in the city ordinance, that's considered my front yard.
But see, that's where we hope that people ask a little further, you know, what else is there that we might be missing? And the council may come back and say there's nothing.
Well, I think that is, a lot of people, residents don't know what to ask, right? That's what I'm saying, if, okay, you, you have to stay three hundred feet off of Jasper, but then educate the resident on what their options are, versus just, like, this is what you got to do. I mean, a lot of people don't know what questions to ask, you know?
And, and that's really part of our discussion here tonight, how do we educate? So, a year ago, we were talking about a checklist, because residents were coming and saying, I didn't know this, I didn't know this, and I didn't know this. So we, we assigned a, a process to develop a checklist, so people know when they're building new, here's what's coming your way, here's-
And I didn't have time to go through a lengthy process of going in, I mean, I, I was building the house, I needed to build the pole barn so I could move out of my old house. I didn't have a bunch of time to go in front of a council and get, weigh in on a bunch of stuff. It's like, I needed this pole barn built, so I built it where Liz told me to build it, build it. If I had another option, maybe I would have explored that, but I didn't know what those options were at the time, you know, so.
Mr. Mayor? Mayor Stockton?
Yeah, we did chat briefly about a variance, but when you're looking at a variance, you're looking at what environmental features are making this lot unique. He can meet a setback, and he has another place to put it, he does not meet the variance criteria. So I most likely told him that a variance was not an option. That doesn't stop him from applying, but like he said, he didn't want to mess around with that eight week.
And if Liz is telling me, you're not going to meet a variance, why would I go through the process of paying for a variance if it's just going to get denied based on city ordinance?
Exactly.
You know, so, I'm not blaming Liz for this, I'm just like, what's the solution for someone, next person who moves into town like me? Giving, giving them more options or communicating, you know, giving Liz the right information to communicate to people, or giving them options on what they can actually do and what they can't do with their property? Because I didn't have a lot of time to go through a bunch of processes like this. I was building the house and I needed it built, and I needed the pole barn built, so I built it where Liz ultimately told me I had to put it. But if there was other options, and I'm not going to apply for a variance if Liz is telling me, well, it's not going to get approved based on these conditions, then why would I pay the money for it, if this is going to get denied, you know?
Yeah, and, and obviously, in that process, the, uh, the council wasn't aware, so it's pretty hard for the council to weigh in on it too. So that's part of what we're trying to do is communication too, what's, what's out there in front of us and, and what does need council action? Because if there is a unique situation, how can the council, uh, maybe it doesn't fix it for you, but we now know going forward, we got to take a look at our, our ordinances to say, how can we avoid this in the future?
Yeah, and I guess I, I don't know what, what's, for me personally, if there's any more clarification on what I can and can't do on my property, I guess I would like to know that from somebody, whether that's Liz, or council, or some, you know? If I want to build another accessory structure, permanent accessory structure, can I do that within three hundred feet of Jasper? I guess that's my question, and how do I figure that out?
Closer to Jasper.
Yeah. Well, is it a hundred and twenty feet, or is it three hundred? I guess that's-
It's three hundred, because your house is further back than that, so.
So you're saying it's three hundred because the house is further than a hundred and twenty feet?
So, we're, we're deviating a long ways from, uh, so I think if you want to build something else, I mean, we, this process again, has been, we've toiled with this a lot last year, and we've asked Liz to develop a checklist so that people could be more informed when they're building stuff, hey, what is the, what is the checklist or the steps they needed to go through this? And, I mean, if you choose to build something again and you believe you'd like it one twenty versus three hundred, I mean, that feels like you should apply for the variance. If Liz is saying, hey, this doesn't necessarily meet the criteria that we have, it is ultimately the P and Z's recommendation, and it's ultimately the city council's call on if that meets it or not, or if we believe it's a good, if, if it's a special enough circumstance because you live on some pie-shaped road and it's, somebody decided that that road should be the three hundred.
Right.
I mean, so I have no idea what your place looks like, but I mean, we try, because we, this is not the, you know, we had some instances in the past where people were frustrated with the building process, because they're not the experts on all of the ordinances, and so they're expecting Liz to kind of walk them through this, and Liz is, has some skin in the game, but she's not like, she's not the people that deal with, are you too close to a water, or what do you need to do with the DNR, and all that good stuff, so that, so we kind of wanted to do this checklist and develop that, so that people had a better idea of what the process is. So we tried to avoid these circumstances where you have basically unhappy customers with the city, right? Because we don't really want the, our residents to be like, this city is like the hardest city in the world to work with.
Yeah.
So, we're trying to avoid that, so we come up with this, uh-
I don't think we made world satisfaction, I think we're still the state, but-
Yeah, yeah. So we're trying, and we're trying to replicate that with this, I would say, this code enforcement too, right? So, we're trying to be better with the process, so we don't get people that are frustrated as heck with a letter that they get that they don't know what to do.
So, for, for my personal situation, I should apply for a variance if I wanted to build, is, is that, is that my-
I have no idea what your situation is. It feels to me like if you want to build something that's close to the road, I, I would apply for the variance and bring it in front of the P and Z and the city council.
Okay.
And that's, that would be my recommendation, and if Liz is saying, hey, this may not be the greatest clause for it, I mean, ultimately, it's this table here that gets to understand why or why not we have a variance and what the special cause is.
Okay.
And there's all kinds of different reasons, and I'm not the smartest guy in the room to know what they are, but we would, we would entertain it.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Mayor, just real quickly?
Mayor Stockton?
Um, just to read, so, actually, a better alternative, which would cost you the same amount of money, would be, would be to ask for an ordinance amendment to change that required setback.
Sure.
Because we have had other people complain about that three hundred foot setback, and that setback goes back to county, so that-
Yeah, that's a lot of setback.
So there's another, just another, it's like, at some point in time, we said it was three hundred.
Yeah.
When we did the RE two point five, they're not three hundred.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know whether some guy scratched us on a bar napkin fifty years ago and that's what it is, you know, I guess. If we can go through and change that, I mean, who would I get ahold of? Do I go through Scott for that?
That would be the same thing, it's like, do we do a variance, and then does the city council look at, like, does three hundred feet, is that, does that make, is that reasonable today?
What, what's the house at right now?
Three twenty?
Okay, let's move on, let's move on.
Well, I just, you're telling them, go for it, but the house is three twenty, and she's saying you can't be in front of the house, that's the problem. The house is so far back, that's why the building's so far back.
It's so far back from which road though?
Jasper.
From the, from the front.
It's in the middle of ten acres. It's, the house is right in the middle, so. But, all right, thanks guys.
All right.
Jan Greber, two eleven fifty-five Now Then Boulevard. So, I came in here with a totally different attitude, so I'm glad that I got to sit through all this, because it gave me a much more, which, after living out here for over forty years, I should know it better, but, you know, the meetings get a little long, so I don't stick around. But, I do want to say, um, I think as a resident of Now Then, and a person who comes as someone who doesn't know anything about other than the, the code enforcements, I think Now Then, the people, no one in Now Then moved out here to live in the city. You know, everybody wanted to have their stuff, they want to do their thing, they want to really pretty much be left alone. When it comes down to enforcing, I think you need to take a look at the people, and really maybe have open forums for, even if it's like certain areas of Now Then, to hear what people want and what they see that they need. Um, like I said, when I came in today, I came in with a totally different attitude, but I think that Now Then, maybe, I, I know you're on the website, but you know, a lot of people move out here and don't even think, maybe Now Then needs to make a book, like, like a little pamphlet that comes out and says, hey, welcome to Now Then, this is how big we are, I know we do this in the newsletter, but something like, hey, just, these are the basic enforcements, like regarding how many animals you can have, or the snow removal, just to give people an insight, because a new person's going to go, wow, we just moved out here, maybe there'll be a coupon for a restaurant in Now Then, or, you know, just to encourage people to, to see what we have to offer. Um, you know, and I have a problem, and it isn't towards Liz, but I have a problem, and Um, you know, and I have a problem, and it isn't towards Liz, but I have a problem, and I heard the mayor say this, that, you know, she's the planner, but she's the code enforcer. And right away, I hear enforcer and I think, uh-oh, Arnold Schwarzenegger's coming in here and gonna be the enforcer, you know? Um, I'm great that, thrilled that Scott's gonna be the one to do this because, so, and I'm gonna just give this as a scenario. So, say I have, I do dog rescue. So, you can come to my house sometimes, I have my own dogs, sometimes I have 10 dogs from a puppy mill raid, or I have 15 cats. Do they stay there? No, I'm just a temporary. I don't consider it a business, I don't wanna get a permit because they're overnight. You know what I'm saying? I'm just a foster. So, so say she comes out to my house, and I'm just gonna use, it could be anybody who was a planner, but she comes out to my house and all of a sudden she goes, holy crap, she's got 15 dogs here. Does that give her the right to say, wow, you're over your limit? Because she didn't come out to see the dogs, she came out to see this and she has no idea what I'm doing, nor do I feel like she has a right to question me because my mother-in-law lives next door. If somebody's gonna complain, it's gonna be her, you know? So, this is what I'm saying. It's like, I'm just saying, I think that people need to be reached out as residents, and we're getting bigger. I hate to see it, but growth is gonna come and you get a lot of these people from the city and they move out here, they get snowmobiles, they get four-wheelers, but they only live on two and a half acres. So, they're cutting through my neighbor's 80 acre field that has, you know, winter wheat and doesn't know it. People just need to be educated. And I think that's where we have to start, Now Then. And I think it starts with the small people and gets bigger. But I, I think that she's got dual, a dual purpose, which I'm not comfortable with because planning is one thing, enforcing is another, and rather than call a person an enforcer, what about a community service, maybe employee, or maybe we could go with a part-time? I don't know if Now Then can afford that. But that way, you can have someone go out and educate people and say, hey, we had a complaint on your barking dog, you know, there's things you can do. You know, we can't tell you who the person is that complained, but we'd like to help you to control the situation. And I'll tell you, I was a perfect one, I had a neighbor whose dog came to our house all the time, all the time. I brought the dog home. Finally, I just, one day, the lady says, she doesn't come over to your house. I grabbed the dog and I shaved the dog down and I spray painted her pink and I sent her home. She goes, what happened to my dog? I said, your dog came to my house. Oh, you know, it's, it's educating. And it's helping people.
It's education already.
But guess what? The dog never came over again. Started, you know? You have to, you have to, you know, enforce, I never hurt the dog. Well, okay, I shouldn't share this story, this is my last story for you, and this is terrible and my husband will die. So, we're laying in bed one night, do you mind this, you know the story? He knows, we're laying in bed at one night, 2:00 in the morning. And where we live on 5, there's a dirt road, and I, 4 miles. And all of a sudden, the four-wheeler starts. And I'm like, hey, did you hear that? Because he'll sleep through anything. So, I wake him up so that he's on my side, you know, he's hearing it, it woke him up too. So, all of a sudden.
Something woke him up.
3 o'clock, Sa- Sa- Saturday morning or Sunday morning. And I'm like, I've had enough. I've had enough. Number one, I'm not from, from Minnesota, so Minnesota nice does not pertain to me. I'm from New York, so I play New York, okay? So, I wake him up and I go, I've had enough, we're gonna go find these people. So, we get in our van.
I am pink.
But, no, worse, worse, this is worse. And I'm embarrassed to admit it, but it's been so many years and, so.
Statute of limitations is out.
Exactly. So, we all know, you're gonna be proud of us. So, we get in my van and we're driving down that dirt road and we can see these kids on this four-wheeler. And all of a sudden, we go down the road and boom, the dust settles. And I go, where are they? And he goes, they're in the ditch, they're in the ditch. So, he turns our van and he pays, he points the light on it and I roll down my window. My son was number one pitcher in baseball because his mom taught him how to throw a ball. I had a carton of eggs and I just started egging these kids. And my husband, we go home and I looked at him, I said, wow. He says, well, you don't think they're gonna tell their parents they went home and got egged, do ya?
No.
And I says, which is worse, that we, that they got, that we went after them? Or that we're in our 40s egging kids on four-wheelers? Never had a problem again.
But you also didn't have break- breakfast next day either, did you?
We had chickens, we had eggs.
Well, Mayor, there's your, uh, there's your, uh, solution to solving your problems. You were talking about the neighbors.
Just make sure you have chickens if you're gonna start egging people. And, and, and we do wanna say, as a disclaimer, we don't recommend going out at 3:00 in the morning and egging people on four-wheelers.
What, I can have a file complaint, just remember that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Hunter Stockman.
Just wanna clarify one thing to get it in the record, I don't know. Um, so we don't forget to address it. But Mr. Corn's biggest complaint was that the letter was kinda generic, right? So, the person that complained about him said there are multiple items stored on his property. So, I said, I said, if I can't get on your property to see it and I can't validate it from the street, I'm basically guessing, and I will use whatever means possible, if it's a photo submitted by a neighbor or the aerial photo, to, you know, kinda put everything out there, right? And I said, that doesn't mean that everything is a violation. So, that is where he was so upset and that going back and forth about trying to explain this. So, anyway, but, so part of the problem is, you know, if you can't validate this from the street, just talking about, you know, the process, because you have to list, um, yeah, the ordinance clause. So, then guessing and sort of covering your bases, right? Because if it's outdoor storage, it could be a lot of things. So, that's kinda where he got hung up and then, um, it was.
But that's where I think we need to be better at the process, right? So, that complaint comes in, it's like, you got a lot of stuff out there, it's like, hey, we need some clarity. It's like, what is a lot of stuff? Because a lot of people have a lot of stuff. So, that you can, we can be more specific. Because you said that opens, we, we talked about, if we go out there, when I'm going out there for, here's the ordinance, but we're gonna start at page 1, we'll let you know when we're at page 500. It's like, somebody put a complaint that you have 22 votes. Somebody wrote about 22 votes. I don't care about the size of your fence or whatever else is, that's what the complaint, so that's where I, I mean.
Yeah, I need specifics.
I mean, and it's, I apologize that this, we, it was not, I hope it wasn't anybody's intent for this to be, it's not an attack on Liz, we gotta go hard on the process and not the person. Because you literally are doing what we're asking you to on code enforcement. So, it is, we've gotta do a better job of the process so that you don't feel like you're getting, you know, attacked or you're trying to do what you believe we're asking you to do, so.
Believe me, I 10 times over appreciate the support and just having you even say that here is helpful and to kinda shut some of them down that way. But yeah, it is hard to go out there and people don't like to be told, right?
Yeah.
What they can do and what they can't do. But, I will say this, as resistant as some are, the process works.
So, so I think, I think there's a great motion out there, I think we need to linger the process and I think we run it through Scott and keep him with our recipe.
I, I do wanna say that one of the key things is, is timeliness too. Because that complaint came in on July 1st and we weren't dealing with it until August. And that was part of where it started brewing. You know, and, and it came in where Scott's brand new and it, it ended up two months in and, and it grew on Facebook.
Yeah.
And I don't know that, that there aren't issues between neighbors sometimes that exacerbate things. General complaints is, I'm upset about what my neighbor said about me, so I'm gonna, it's tit for tat, if you will.
Right.
We have to be able to distinguish between that. And that's why I said, sometimes you just gotta get yourself lawyers and, and deal with your neighbors. Uh, the city's not interested in being the referee on those. But I also think we need to be expedient, uh, with our response so that it doesn't blow up and doesn't take on a whole life of its own on social media or, you know, talk among neighbors. And we need to be able to do what we can quickly to try and keep things as small as possible.
I like that, once we believe that we do have an issue, like, like you said, the list that we've been dealing with since 2011 and 2016, I mean, that's, that's ridiculous, right? At some point, it's like, we gotta either find them enough or clean it up ourselves and go through the process and just get it off the list.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Planter Stockman, I think a lot of people have a problem with our rules and you just happen to be the person that's in between them and the rules. And they really want their way, but they keep running into the rules and they get frustrated and then they come here saying, just, I would just like my way, please. But we have rules and you, we made you our enforcer and so you get a lot of the heat that council should get. And I appreciate that because they could be calling me, but they just call you.
No, it's fine, that's actually what I'm here for. That is why you hired me. I am doing that job for you so that you don't have to take the heat. And I, believe me, I educate people absolutely as much as possible because, you know, and, and I am, when I am there for something, um, I'll say, by the way, just an FYI, you know? You know, and I'll tell people whatever it is and, um, but, like, um, again, some people will drag the process out themselves. And I believe that, well, I know that had they just asked for additional time or something or additional explanation, it wouldn't have been a problem, so it's, anyway.
And Liz, I find you to be the least abrasive person of all the personalities that I deal with. You are the least abrasive.
Yeah, I'm not that scary.
When I, when I hear that you're, all these words, I, I don't believe it.
Well, okay, so somebody started asking personal questions and I got a little sarcastic and said it was none of his business and, anyway, that's where he got ticked off, partially, anyway.
Alright, so let's move on, we're approaching three hours here. CUPs and IUPs. Again, my understanding was this is where we wanted to start. Let's find out who, uh, has CUPs and, uh, see who wants to, who doesn't know they have them and wants to get rid of them, who has them and aren't using them anymore and wanna get rid of them so that we can have the, uh, like our recycling, they bring them in and we'll cover the cost on a one-time deal. If you wanna get rid of your CUP, we'll work with the county to get that cleaned up. So, we can get our rolls cleaned up. So, I, I didn't expect, um, eight tiny pages of, of open CUPs. I do know when we tried to work with Arbig two years ago and one of the big things was trying to find out how many people had businesses in certain communities, we, we didn't have this. Or the IUPs. But going forward, what is it we're trying to do? And so, my recommendation is first and foremost, if you look at this list, there's a lot of information here. And a lot of colors. I believe it's page 5, page 6, I'm sorry. In the middle of, on the top of page 6, you'll see a color code. And I'm not sure what's been done on this in the past year. But we, we have four, how many, 1, 2, 3 yellows. Yellows are letter sent to be revoked. And at this point, only one of those seems to be responding at. Gary Bethum, at the bottom of page 1, receives a letter on 5/25/22, agreed to revocation. Land Lakes Choir Boys is now a church, that's to be revoked. And the property that no longer exists, to be revoked. So, we've got 3 of them out of 20, I mean, 8 pages. The other thing that, in, in my way of thinking is, what would be helpful is to present a list here that's got these various categories grouped together so we can go through and say, okay, what's truly going on here? You know, get all the mining permits together and say, okay, how many of these are active? But if we were gonna go out and say, letter sent. So, all these people that were mining black dirt or gravel or something on their property at some point. Uh, some of these people don't own the property anymore. So, again, if, if we have consolidated colors here, you can go through and say, okay, what are the action items to be done? So, um, we have, it says, letter sent, no response. I have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. So, it looks like we've only sent 6 letters out. Well, at least 6 letters that nobody responded to. We have the light blue is send a letter, so apparently those letters have never been sent, but they might likely be active CUPs. We have, um, letter sent likely inactive is, is kind of a cream color. So, we have the light blue and the, the cream colored, never even got letters.
Mr. Mayor.
If this is right. Planter Stockman.
Uh, the council only authorized me to send 8 letters to try this out. We've never grouped back together with all the transition and all the meetings you had for hiring to talk about this again. So, this is not lackadaisical on my part. Um, we can go full bore, we can take it step by step. But just to, as a reminder, that's what I was authorized to do.
Okay, let me ask this, the white color or the no color? Are those all needing letters as well?
Well, those would be the ones, most of them that are still in operation and still owned by the same owner. So, those would be, um, yeah, the ones that where we're gonna have to go out and do inspections for certain and work with people if they need to process a different CUP or, you know, maybe some of them aren't operating and we just don't know it. But they have the same owner. So, those would be slightly more complicated than the ones that have changed owners. Now, having said that, the ones that have changed owners and did not respond to the letter sent, we can just simply notify them of the revocation hearing. And if they don't show up, we can move forward. I mean, we have to prepare resolutions for the record and such, but, um, and we can only revoke the ones that, where we have a copy of the permit or we have proof in the minutes that the CUP was, um, approved. So, the ones where we can't find any record of it, they're just gonna hang out there and, and maybe nobody knows anyway if it was never recorded, you know?
So, let me, let me ask this question. So, the sort on this, I'm gonna assume is by PID number?
We sorted by number because the ones at the very bottom haven't been verified. In other words, it's taken us quite amount of time to scan and double-check these files to make sure we have a copy of the permit and to check ownership and that kinda thing. So, we still have a little work to do on the bottom below, starting on page 6. So, that's why they were.
So, are those, the PID number, would you say then it's by age? Are the lowest numbers the oldest PID's?
No, no, that doesn't correlate necessarily. Um, we could order by, we have the data proved there in the fifth column. But yeah, some of these go way, way back. But yeah, we can group by color if you'd like.
So, so here's, here's the deal, I'm, I'm looking at this and, and how do you get this whittled down as quickly as possible till you're now dealing with the exceptions or the, the missing information? as quickly as possible till you're now dealing with the exceptions or the missing information? So, I'm looking at, at colors here and I've got, and I'm not sure why, but a lot of the grays say no action needed. I'm not sure what.
For multiple reasons. Some were denied, some were, um, with.
Again, wouldn't it, wouldn't it make sense to get all those out of the mix and say, all of these? We can then have a discussion saying, these are no action needed for this reason. Uh, these are, you know, so we can start going through and say, um, you know, there's a bunch where it's saying compliant. But again, if we had all the compliance, we could say, why do we say they're compliant? And when we say compliant, has somebody actually been out there and verified the conditions of the permit?
Well, they're, yeah, they're newer than.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Didn't we ask one time to have a complete comprehensive list of every IUP and CUP? And maybe that's why we have all them right here right now?
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, let's, what do we do, go forward? Because we, we've got them here. We don't know if we have permits for all of these, but we have, as best we know, city council or township approved something on these properties at some point. We believe this to be everything.
Should, Mr. Mayor, my recommendation would be, the first cut is any CUP or IUP that's changed hands? We should look at those. If it's the original owner and you still have it, I would say that would not be the first class.
And that's what I believe we did last year, starting with the ones that had changed owners. Because we, we'd said, here's people that we know, I mean, this person's no longer with us, they're dead. We know that they don't have that CUP.
We always said we did eight of them, right?
Right, so we could move forward, yes, and do the remainder of them that have changed ownership.
So, at least get that, just to say, you know, how many do we totally have? How many of them have changed hands? And then how many do we leave are, I mean, it should be changed hands and ones that haven't changed hands? How many of those are we, you know, pretty confident that they're still running a business on there? So, we can at least get it cut that way.
And that's, that's my point. So, what's the action item going forward from here? And I believe that we should whittle these down and certain, first of all, you can take them and sort by color and you can say, okay, which ones have changed hands? Because again, those are the ones you wanna send the letters out to. If they don't even know they've got a CUP, they may be willing to help us clear it up right now. And so, how do we get to that point? Because we're gonna get to the same thing on interim use permits here. We've got them mixed in altogether here. We've got a bunch of denials. Can we just put a category on denied? And then, again, have subsets? Because eventually what you go on to do, you know, it's either denied or changed owners. Again, if they've changed owners, the IUP's dead.
Most likely, not for sure, right? Because if they, if the owner is meeting the exact conditions of the.
Well, I'm talking, I might move to the interim use permits.
Oh.
Interim use, if, if they've changed owners, the interim use permit's gone.
Oh, correct. I would.
On the CUP, if they're meeting the exact conditions. But again, that's a future step. We're gonna first figure out, uh, we'll get eventually to the active ones and say, okay, a new owner, but they're meeting the conditions exactly. And that would be, we'd have to verify that. But I think right now, we're trying to, to whittle this down to manageable numbers. And so, my recommendation would be, we have hired two staff members to try and help us straighten out things in the office and get things filed electronically. This, to me, would be one of the critical electronic files that we should be setting up so that we can go through this and start whittling it down in the, uh, the biggest rocks first and whittling it down to eventually, okay, here's the CUPs that exist and somebody has to go out there and verify conditions are actually being met. And a lot of this can be done through letters. And then tracking, the letters were sent out, the letters responded to. They wanna give up the CUP, they wanna keep the CUP. They understand the conditions of it and they're meeting them exactly, or they aren't and not need a modified CUP. They'll have to come in for that. They could also say, here's, as you said, we found the permits or we didn't. We've got a list of saying, these people we believe have permits, we just don't know where the permit is. And right now, we have staff going through the back room looking for paper records that we can put into electronic files. To me, it makes sense to utilize our temporary staff to clean this up at a reasonable price and, uh, and something they can focus on getting electronically into our system. Because then, as we need the information going forward, it's current and it's available electronically.
Mr. Mayor.
Planner Stockman.
I have a hard time with that. A, because I'm two-thirds through here at least. And, I guess, I don't know. Are they gonna know what they're looking for? Their help maybe could be better, um, I mean, yeah, if they could, if they come across a, an actual CUP that says CUP on it, they're gonna notice that for sure. But, um, most of those files, I think, have been pulled. But, um, certainly, you know, making a list of, for them, that they can send letters out and maybe track responses or something, somehow, but we gotta make sure that we get this initial, I guess.
So, we, we have a spreadsheet here. And, and you're saying up to page six, top of page six, you've verified the information. Below the code, uh, there's still some information you have to verify. But let's, you know, we, we've got five plus pages here that the information's verified on, right?
Correct, yeah.
So, why can't we have staff that's certainly cost-effective and pretty talented, from what I've seen? Try and straighten this out by category. Get all the mining permits together and then decide what to do with the mining permits. Let's get all the, you know, the, um, the areas that we need to be, uh, new owners, but the letter hasn't been sent. Let's, you know, let's figure out what's gonna be sent and then get the letter sent out and have them start tracking. But I think that by having them do that, and then obviously, they're gonna get to a point where they need some additional help because they don't know where these are. But I'd like to see these, uh, as part of our electronic files. If we're gonna have CUPs on there, we should have this information in our system. And it should be current.
Oh, absolutely.
And that's what we hired these guys to do.
Your system is an absolute mess as far as record keeping.
The system we inherited is a mess, yes.
Yes.
It's ours to fix, right Natalie?
It is.
Oh, my gosh.
Mr. Mayor, if I may speak, if you're trying to add more on to Karen and Madeline, the next meeting, I'm gonna request that I get to keep them a lot longer than. They're only to St. Francis Boulevard on the properties. So, my, our timeline, we're, you know, I checked, four, I got sick. And I think, what did I say? We were at thirty-three hundred dollars, I think. And we were only authorized nine thousand. And they're only to St. Francis Boulevard. And it's not like they're sitting around talking. I mean, they are working. They're, I mean, to even just get them to say, hey, how was your day going? Is sometimes really hard with both of them because they're both just kinda go-getters. So, I'm gonna say if we wanna add more on.
How much when you say, because I know that when we were in there last year when we came in, there were a lot of the files, we couldn't figure out why they weren't here because they're already electronically filed. So, I don't know, in St. Francis Boulevard, what?
Well, they're to the S's. So, that means everything from T through or not all the way in.
Are the numbered streets done already?
Some of them, not all of them. I mean, I think there's still seven or eight drawers to go through.
And, and I'm.
I can give you another recommendation from Scott if we need to extend it and stuff.
I know, I'm just kinda putting it out there that if we're gonna try to add more responsibilities that I want you guys to be aware of that. My time is gonna run out and I don't, we don't have all the properties in yet.
Yep, and, and that's, that's understood.
Okay.
And again, when we brought them in, we had no idea, you know, how long that would take.
No, we didn't.
Uh, you know, Lisa was in here for a number of years, uh, so we know how long it was taking prior to this. But that's, again, I agree with Councilmember Alders, that's what Scott needs to say, that, yeah, we wanna get all these records in and we want these electronically in there so that should we need this information like we've done in the past, this is current. We'll have to prioritize which is more critical and what's it gonna take. But I, I don't disagree that it's quite possible we're gonna have to keep them longer. I appreciate the fact that they're doing extremely well from everything I've heard. And they are go-getters. I think neither of them are great talkers to begin with, so that's it. But, uh, I've been in signing papers and didn't realize the two of them are in the back room together. Because they don't even talk to each other.
No, when they're going through stuff, they're looking, they'll bring me the things. I will tell you though, Planner Stockman, but I've not had any questions on CUPs or IUPs yet. I've had a lot about watershed and if we couldn't find the answers, Madeline wasn't gonna call you.
Ooh, he is watershed guy.
Yeah, so, as far as I know, we haven't found anything on those.
Watch out for ya, even though you're, even though you're in lame duck session.
Plus that whole cabinet full of plats and all the subdivisions are not even touched.
Okay.
All right, so at this point, um, that would be my recommendation. We'd have Administrator Lainer evaluate it and see what we can do. I don't know what we're gonna do with the plats. We're gonna try and scan those in as well.
She may have gotten, Lisa may have gotten a lot of the big sheets, the rolled up stuff, but there's, there are still some folded up items and, yeah, just other papers and.
Is she scanning that into the system?
Lea, remember, uh, remember when they rented the big scanner? Yeah. But there's still all these folders from, you know, tracking plats and development agreements and whatever else to record, so it's.
I think the back room's almost empty, isn't it?
That's funny. I think they've filled up three, three shredded bins.
At least three, yeah.
With what they scanned?
Well, no, with, that was past our retention.
It's been a lot of years with this going on.
Oh, it's terrible that that's.
We used to, you know, back when Mr. Scheffler was here, they actually would take the retention, things that passed their retention and take them out to the crematorium and burn them. If he sold the business.
Throw it in with the dog.
We take them off, and we put them under Alders' place and burn them in a barrel?
Bond fires. Start his field on them.
There's a, there's a pileover by you though that you could throw this winner.
Yeah, we should throw that.
So, make a motion to adjourn?
What is the actual, I said, can, can I get what exactly is, we're supposed to do with this right now then? I didn't, wasn't clear.
I would, I, I'm gonna recommend that the administrator take a look at the first five pages and see what we can do to organize and clean this up so that we can present it back to council and say, what are the action items we can take on this? Because right now, it's, there's nine different categories. And so, and if we are, are looking at letters to be sent, what, what will that add to the responsibilities?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
So, arrange by color and delete those that have been revoked?
No.
No, there's nothing to delete yet.
Nothing to delete, just organize by color?
And I, I would say similarly on the IUPs, categorize all the ones that are denied together. Just, just again, this may not be the end-all, but I see interim use permits denied, interim use permits active, and interim use permits expired. And if you take a look at the, the dates on these, some of these others are probably in the expired range. So, again, clean that up, just so we categorize them and we say, okay, now here, here we can say, what are our next action items that come from this?
So, Mr. Mayor, we've done nothing on IUPs yet? I mean, other than just add the most recent one?
Yep, but I'm saying if, if we sort them, things like, actually, Murray Olfert's, we just went through tonight. Obviously, isn't compliant, he's not even, you know, he's renting out the property here.
Yeah.
Um, Hartwoods, they, they're out of business. So, I mean, there are certain things we can take a look and say, these are, um, you know, Bob and Sue Swanson don't own the auto sales anymore. So, there are some of these things where we can take a look and say, the conditions of the IUP is if you sell, it's done. And we can, we can clean this up fairly quickly and then we can say, okay, then what's the next action? If we need somebody to go out and check the conditions are still being met. But right now, by date, you know, this may be where the second list, the second action item is, send a letter and say, are you still active? And they say, no, I haven't been for two years. Well, that means you're expired. But, but let's, let's, let's group them first and then take the next action item. Who gets the letters and what do we do with those letters? Similar here, the first five pages that you've already sorted through. Let's get those sorted and then say, okay, what's the next action item? Because by that time, Scott will have a better idea. Current staff is sending out letters, what does that look like and do we have capacity for that? Is that something where you had to have staff, delay the activity, uh, go to a temp agency for it? You know, what might it be? And where would the budget for that come from? But for right now, this is a lot of information that could be sorted. And like I said, the mining permits, um, probably most of them are inactive. But once we get them all there, we can say, what's the action on this color? That make sense to you, Mr. Lainer?
A lot of people sent.
Yes, sir.
All right? So, Scott, do you need any more information on this? Or direction?
I don't believe so. I think I'm trying to know what you're saying.
So, is the council okay with that?
We love it.
A second then.
All right, motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing that, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we are adjourned.